Hear about the rising generation and our good works. I'm not sure exactly how we're. We're gonna handle this as far as who goes first. Uh, I'm gonna look at my agenda, maybe in a telling. So we have. Miss Summit County, the Little Buckaroo and the rodeo royalties. And we're sorry to keep you waiting. We know it's the bad form to keep the royals waiting. But in any event, so. Who, who would like to take the lead in introducing you? Is uh, or do you introduce yourselves? I absent anyone else, you introduce yourself. So. Who raise your hand, Miss Summit County. Okay, come on up. You three. And uh, tell us. Cut, let's pull, let's pull another chart there.
Yeah, why not?
This is. Yeah, this is, we're gonna. Make sure that.
Did you, you brought a resume and a job application?
So your microphones have a switch in the middle and hold it, push it once and it'll stay green. Okay, now, who, who is uh, Miss Summit County?
That's me.
That's why you're in the middle.
Yes.
Okay, would you introduce yourself and then we'll go to your first and second attendant, so however it's described.
Okay, um, I'm Miss Summit County. My name is Holly Jarrett. I um, am gonna be a senior in high school this year.
Where's that?
At North Summit High School.
Oh, the Braves. And, and uh, okay, let's go with first attendant.
My name's Kayla McNulty. I am the first attendant.
And you're from where?
I am from Camas.
Camas, that's South Summit.
Yes, sir.
And that's allowable? Apparently sorry, apparently sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Good. And second attendant.
I'm Tessa Beuticofa and I'm from Oakley.
Oakley, okay, perfect. Well, do you wanna uh, tell us more about uh, how you feel about this honor?
Um, it was, it's super cool to be Miss Summit County because when I was younger, I was like, saw the princesses and the queens and I was like, yeah, that's like something I really wanna do. And it's harder than it seems that we don't just walk across the stage and look pretty despite what people say. We do have a talent portion where we each compete our own talent. And so it's super cool to like, see all the different talents and what people can and can't do and where they thrive. And so the pageant itself is super cool. And so far, we've got to like, meet a bunch of people at the fair. We've got pictures of people. We've got to help out and do a lot of service projects, which has been super fun. It's just been a good opportunity so far all around.
I thought the requirements you had to drive into demo derby, is that true?
I wish, I wish. I would have been a heartbeat.
I believe it. Like, what, what were your talents? Let's start with our first attendant.
I had a swing dance partner. I don't know if you guys have ever heard of swing dancing.
Can you give us a demonstration?
Oh man, probably not in heels and this outfit.
I think the partner might be the bigger challenge. Finding one, a suitable one.
Yeah, I actually, my partner, I taught him in a week and a half. My talent is picking up talents and being able to teach it to other people. And so I actually. Found a guy, taught him in a week and a half and said, okay, we're going on stage. Good luck. Here we go.
And then what did you do with him after that?
Well, if you want more specifics, he's actually my boyfriend.
I wanted the whole story, okay.
Um, I did motivational speaking, so I put together a, like, three-minute speech and presented that.
Perfect.
I played my violin and I had an accompaniment on the piano.
Well, that's good. I won't ask you the difference between a violin and a fiddle, but we'll save that for another time. Okay, um, well, we ought to get a picture of you three. Have I missed anything? Do you have any other, any other comments you wanna give us? I understand that. You're gonna be showing up this Friday and Saturday nights to be driven into the rodeo arena about quarter to eight, is that true?
Yes, we will be there. We'll be in the parade on uh, Saturday.
And Saturday morning in the parade, well.
We will be attending every event there is.
I'm told when I'm driving you, I shouldn't be eating a burger and talking on the phone. I should pay attention. We'll see how it goes. Okay, let, shall we get a picture?
Okay, here's Roger back, so.
Okay, good. I think, given that I'm not. You'd probably dress for touch real occasions.
You ought to stand in the back, you're the tallest.
Yeah, we could stand next to Malin. I'll stand in the back. Then you want the flags? Okay. Well, we'll put you in the middle. We gotta keep shorter, right? Those heels might have been tough for that.
Oh, yeah.
I'm the shortest person.
Okay, thank you, congratulations.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you, thank you. Okay. Now. Next up, I think we have the Little Buckaroos. Now, these are Summit County, Miss Summit Counties in waiting sort of, right, and training ground. Okay, who, who's the, are you, are you, the middle is always in charge, is that true? All right, let's go for it. What, give it, tell us your names and a little bit about you, where you, where you live and.
I'm Quincy Call. I'm the Little Buckaroo Princess and I live in Randolph, Utah.
Up in Ridge County?
Yeah.
What'd you say your name is, Call?
Quincy Call.
Call, huh? That's a good name for Ridge County. There's quite a few of those. Okay, and how about, are you the first attendant?
Yes, I'm Brooklyn Brown. I'm the Little Buckaroo First Attendant and I live out in Eagle Mountain.
In Little Mountain, down in Utah County?
Yes.
Terrific.
My name is Nina Hurst. I'm the Little Buckaroo Second Attendant and I live in Twilla, Utah.
In Twilla or Grantsville?
Twilla.
Jerry Hurst, a relative of yours? Jerry Hurst?
No, Nina.
Not that one. All right, very good. And did you have to compete with talents, or how did you get these positions?
Um. We. We, um. We competed and um. There were seven other girls and we competed. We had to um. Do horsemanship pattern and interview and a speech and then an impromptu question. And modeling.
Well, what were your questions? Do you remember? It's no longer impromptu since you've already had it and we don't even need the answers, but let's hear the question at least.
We got asked why we wanted to be Summit County Little Buckaroo Princess.
Well, that's a pretty good question. Do y'all got the same question?
Yeah.
Did y'all have all the same answer for the fame and glory, or what was?
Did you say that Summit County is the best county in the state of Utah?
Oops. Not when you're from Twill and Ridge County, it's harder to say that probably, isn't it? And what was, in Utah County, we, we, you're, you're sort of foreigners. In a way, up here on foreign territory. Okay, well, that's good. Uh, let's have a picture of you guys. Come on up. We're a little shorthanded. Two of our members here are on the turn. Congratulations. Sister Hurst, thanks. So Jerry Hurst. Do you know who we are? Okay, now. We got the royalty, rodeo royalty, royalties. So you know the routine here. Middle seat is commander.
Goodness, I guess I'm first. Hello, I'm Cheyenne Gowerluck. I'm your Summit County Rodeo Queen and I am a Summit County resident. From Francis, Utah.
From South Summit in Francis, no less. And what's your last name?
Gowerluck.
Gowl?
Gowerluck?
Gowerluck.
It's like our luck with a G. Gowerluck. You'll never hear any announcer say it right, so if it's something like good garlic. A gurulook, it's me, it's the same person.
It sounds very lucky. Okay, and our first attendant.
Yes, my name is Janice Nos. I am your Summit County First Attendant and I am another Summit County resident. I am from Hennepur, Utah.
Up on the north end. We got north and south covered. Okay, and then second.
Yes, um, I'm your second, your Summit County Second Attendant. My name is Brooke Steinfeld and I am the outsider of the group. I live down in Pleasant Grove.
Pleasant Grove, well, that's good, down in Utah County.
Yes, sir.
And, and what sorts of things did you have to? Excel in, in order to. Receive this honor?
Like the Little Buckaroo Princesses, we also have to do modeling, speeches, impromptu questions, interviews, horsemanship. I will say our speeches this year were extemporaneous, which they gave us 10 minutes to prepare. And then we had to walk out on stage and deliver a two-minute speech.
Well, that's good. And, and uh, what were the topics of your speeches?
So they had a couple of different ones. We were supposed to. Give an example of a rodeo from Blank's point of view. So we had things that we could choose. So I know I chose a rough sock rider.
You, I believe.
I chose rodeo mom.
Uh-huh.
I chose um, eyes through, looking through the eyes of a little kid.
I was hoping one of you would have chosen it through the eyes of that calf being roped. What, what he's thinking was racing out, that, that steer's thinking.
See, you know, I wish that was an option.
That would really have tested your creativity.
Oh, yes. Our horsemanship patterns are pulled actually from raining patterns. Which raining, to sum it up, is we have to lop fast, we have to lop small circles and slow. We also have to do lead changes, so shifting from one lead to another at the lope. We also have to do rollbacks, which is basically the horse turning around and then loping off. We have to do sliding stops, backing up. They really wanna test to make sure you have the horsemanship skills. So if you're ever in that position of something's not going right, that you can handle it and still look professional.
That's, it's, it's pretty difficult to change the leads and, I mean, a lot of them, those sliding stops and stuff, it's. You practiced a lot. I've, I've seen a little of that done. Well, um, so why don't we come up and take your pictures as well? Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay, I, I always like to get my foot cut nut, sure. All right, we're gonna see you in there too.
Sounds great.
Are you gonna be on watchback riding in early?
No, you're there, I'm going through.
How about? No, thank you. Yeah, that's when the tour rider gets bucked off and then. Rescue after that eight-second deal. Okay. So we have now a, a presentation from the North Summit. Fire Special Service District regarding 2023 fire operations model. We have Chief Nielsen, Mike Novak. Michelle Anderson and Roger Armstrong. Michelle, do you wanna come up?
No, I'm okay.
You don't want a chair up here?
Oh, Michelle.
And Roger, do you wanna, do you remain here? Do you wanna, you tee this up?
Yeah, do you mind?
No, please.
I'm gonna go and take the lead on this. So. I think as you guys are aware, Chris and I sit on the uh, North Summit Fire Administrative Control Board and at. Just to kind of bring council up to speed, um, over the last two or three meetings, we've. Created three committees uh, for North Summit and we've tasked the chief. Uh, outside of those committees and ultimately working with those committees. To come up with a plan and what we asked the chief to do was. To develop. To develop a plan that initially talked what I termed a stabilization phase, which is essentially rebuilding North Summit from where it was in April when the chief. Came on board, um, to get it to a place of stability where it could respond to calls. Um, once, and he, he got there, um, it's. I think it's gonna be a work in progress over the long term to make sure it stays stable in the short term. Um, and then to start looking from now through three years out. To see what we need to do to get our finances in place, to get equipment in place, facilities in place. And to really understand better the needs, our labor needs essentially. Um, as everybody knows, labor, not just in Summit County, but I think throughout the, the country, has been a challenge. Over the last two and a half years of the pandemic. And as it relates to um, firefighters and making sure that we're, we're fully staffed. We're no less sensitive to the economic trends uh, as anyplace else. So that zero to three years planned and looking out five years, part of that is to also understand the growth. In North Summit, because we're seeing, you know, we're aware of, well, Harley, we're aware of, I believe it's called Red Hills. That Colville is, is working on right now and they're planning efforts to figure out what that's gonna look like. And I think we're all aware of uh, Cedar Crest and, you know, the, the possibilities that could occur there and their bodies, their houses. Their businesses that will all be associated with that. And anytime we have that kind of growth coming forward. It means that we're gonna continue to have to grow the department to respond to the needs of the, that growth, both financially. And from a, a labor and staffing and equipment and facilities standpoint, so. Zero to three, three to five years, and then ultimately kind of a long-term forecast that's not gonna be nearly as precise. But a long-term forecast as to what things might look at, look like 10 years out, if you look farther out in terms of the state forecast of population growth. In order to help facilitate those discussions. Uh, the North Summit Fire ACB created three committees. One is a facilities committee and that's chaired by Ari Iainides. The, uh, the second is a finance committee and Mike Novak is the chair of that committee. And who is one of each chairs, a personnel committee that develops policies and procedures for our personnel. Uh, so that we can get that in places we go forward, which are again likely to have to morph. As we determine, you know, future needs with respect to labor. Um, the finance committee came back to us uh, in our last meeting. And they made a presentation in terms of the existing finances, what they look like, what our revenues and expenses look like. Um. We had some discussion about what our, our current tax level is, what the current bill levy is on taxes, which hasn't changed in 14 years. Um. When the chief stepped onto his position, I think we had some information from, from Park City Fire, which had been running on an interim basis. The fire department and they took stock of the state of the facilities, they took stock of the state of. Uh, basic safety equipment for firefighters, including turnout gear. Uh, and self-contained breathing apparatus. Uh, and made recommendations and findings about what the status of that was. And I think that's been reported out to the county council that most of those critical safety pieces of equipment were far past their expiration date. We had to address that uh, early on. So once we had a chance to look at that, I think, you know, we concluded that. Um. Mike and his finance committee, Mike, the chief, uh, and Matt Levitt. Should get together and take the information that they presented to us and bring that to the county council so that you are. On a level, level playing field in terms of information with what we got at the ACB and where we stand. We also decided that, you know, at some point, this is going to be, well, not at some point. This is going to be the first time that as a daylighting process for the citizens of North Summit. It's a chance to take a look at what these numbers tell us, a chance to get a look at these numbers. The state of our facilities, the state of equipment, where we sit today, what our revenues look like, what our tax base looks like today. I think I've said every time the words North Summit Fire have come out of my mouth. In the last six months, seven months, eight months, we are going to have to have a tax increase. There's not enough revenue to support North Summit County. Uh, fire and make it viable and make it. A safe operation for firefighters and make it safe for the community. It's not working well right now. We got a presentation from Park City Fire last week. They are prepared. To give up. Um, they would like to disconnect, I think, from um, EMS. On the east side, we have a study that Jana is working on, uh, along with other community members, north and south. In terms of uh, eastern Summit County EMS and what that may look like. And so we have to have a better understanding of our own finances here as we approach that to understand if that's an option. That the study, if the study recommends uh, eastern Summit County should take over broadly eastern Summit County EMS or. South Summit should take over, South Summit EMS, North Summit should take over North Summit EMS, or we should have one umbrella EMS the Park City would run. And we, we just have to understand what the finances look like to do that, where we sit today, so that we know what other changes to the finances. Might have to take place for any of those iterations that we may choose. Um, but this is an opportunity for the public in North Summit to get a look at the finances as they exist today. And for us to actually start on an active basis, that conversation about. Fire service and taxation for fire service in North Summit County. It's coming at a tough time. Uh, we have a second part of our discussion today that's gonna be about taxation. Uh, generally, we heard some public input last week about how the tax notices that have gone out. Recently are landing on the shoulders of citizens in all part of the county, all parts of the county. Um, we're gonna get a, a report today from the auditor, from the uh, assessor's office and from the treasurer's office. On taxation issues in Summit County generally, how we got where we got, and I assume we'll probably have some public input about taxes. Um, but. Frankly, you know, we're not gonna abolish fire service and we're not gonna compromise fire service. Um, because of a tax issue, so it will start a conversation today, I believe. With the residents of North Summit, uh, and it would, this will get kicked back to the ACB to start. Making those plans to start as, as I characterized it, I think, in our last ACB meeting. Um. We have to increase taxes. We can increase them a little, we can increase them moderately, or can, we can increase them uh, in a bigger way. And part of that is gonna have to be based on the input from the citizens of North Summit. In terms of the levels of service that they wanna see in North Summit and the chief can tell us what. You know, the current tax rates buy, what a small increase will buy, what a moderate increase will buy, and what a larger increase will buy. And with that information, with that knowledge, then we'll, we'll be able to get feedback from our residents to. Let us know, we'll be able to tell them a tax rate in, in this range will result, or in, or a tax increase in this range will. Result in an impact of tax. A tax rate that's higher will have an impact of Y and one that's higher will have an impact of Z and these are the services you get with eat, with each. Um, let's say, where, what, what direction should we be looking uh, as the public makes their voice heard? So. This is that very first step in that process, so that's as much as I have to add.
Chief, Mike?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch really quick on, just to reiterate, we have the presentation that Michael conduct here in just a second, but I just wanna say thanks for letting me come again because I'm taking a lot of your time the last few weeks, so. I'm sure you're sick of hearing from us by now.
We're taking a fair amount of your time.
Well, that's true. I agree. Thank you. Um, but second, just to kind of reiterate what Roger had said, is he gave a direction to us and me specifically to be able to create these um, plans and so the way that I took it was. We needed something immediate. That was the quick fix, which was successful. We were able to get 26 firefighters. We're still working through some staffing issues. We're not to where we wanna be 100%. But it was available, we're now up and running in the fire stations, not responding from home, so we've had success with that quick fix. What we're here to talk about tonight is zero to three, which is the stabilization phases, Roger liked to coin it, which was a great coinage. Um, and then we're gonna look at three to five years as growth, five to 10 as, not tonight, but in the future, five to 10 as extended growth and then beyond, just like he had referred to, so. I'll let Mike take over from here.
Okay. Uh, good afternoon. So we're here to uh, talk about the North Summit Fire District and I think much of what you'll hear is building off of Roger's introductory comments. Uh, and then, oh, you already turned the next slide. Most of you know me. Uh, but we are now a nine-member administrative control board. Uh, Roger and Chris uh, joined us. Thank you for your, for your help. We also added two people uh, at large. We have a very strong board, all paddling in the right direction. We've got a great challenge ahead of us as Roger teed up. So I wanted to start with uh, an introduction to the One Ship Fire. That happened on July 17th. There's a lot to observe uh, from this fire that'll. Come up in our presentation here. The fire was across the street from Station 23. You could have thrown a rock and hit, hit the fire. But Station 23, like Hennepur, are not manned. So we responded with uh, Rescue 23 out of Station 21, cause Rescue 21's being fixed. Two firefighters uh, responded. They got there in 13 minutes, which is a great response time. Um, and started putting water on the fire. One of the firefighters was a, I'll say he's a rookie. Yeah. Uh, is he a very junior, but the other one was senior and I wanna mention his name, Ryan Smith. Uh, he did an excellent job according to chief. A very senior guy, did some techniques he was trained on that got the fire under control quickly, so uh, thank you to Ryan Smith. As you know, we were augmented by Park City Fire and South Summit Fire. Um. And. The three, the three stations uh, got the fire under control in maybe an hour, hour and a half?
No, it was quite a bit longer than that, but uh, we were able to get it contained. Hold it at bay, cause One Ship ran out of water, so we actually had to start shuttling water in. But yeah, we were able to contain it um, eventually, but it did extend to a wildland fire, so we also had state deployment and then the county uh, unit that you guys just implemented, they also responded.
Right, so the takeaway here is staffing's what it's all about. That's gonna lessen the threat level, uh, we.
Excuse me, Mike?
Yes.
Hey, Matt? Could you two young people take it someplace else to have your chat? Thank you.
We probably could have easily got water on that fire in four, in four minutes out of the One Ship station. Next slide, please.
And just, if you don't mind me just adding really quick, now those stations traditionally, none of the stations were traditionally manned. So it's kind of a new thing that we've been doing is manning Colville from the station itself. And then honestly, so, so One Ship traditionally was never manned anyways. But if we could man it, we would have had a lot less fire buildup and we could have attacked it a lot sooner and just like we had discussion previously. The sooner we get water on the fire, the quicker the fire goes out, basically, so.
So let's talk about how we're building our fire department and as Roger said, we're looking at things. Like what we're doing right now, I'm gonna call it back in business, which started on April 22nd when we replaced Park City Fire. And we're just into the stabilization phase. And then the third part of our presentation will talk about growth phase one. And as Roger said, there's multiple phases, but phase one is zero to three years. Next slide, please. So back in business, uh, as, as Roger said, that's really started in March when uh. Chief came, came aboard and uh, we're glad to have him. Next slide, please. I labeled this uh, after the storm, so I think we called what happened earlier this year a lot of different things, so let's just say was the storm. Which ended effectively in April 22nd when we got our own staff in place. Uh, we were staffing Station 21, again, the, the model that we had, which is Colville.
Correct.
So uh, just like before, we have folks at Station 21, but nobody at One Ship in Hennepur. There were 26 people brought back. Everybody had to fill out an application, interview with chief and get on the roster. About 60% of the roster are returnees. And as chief said, a, a big thing is. And as Chief said, a a big thing is. They're on duty in Colville. Uh, interesting, when we were interviewing for. The chief position, all the chiefs said. Why are your guys at home? So i- i- it kind of dawned on us like, yeah, so. They're at the station, uh, we responded in thirteen minutes out of Colville on the One Ship Fire. I don't know how long it would take and somebody to answer their page, get to the station, start the truck. But so we're, we've reduced the risks significantly already. The next thing we looked at was the infrastructure. Uh, believe it or not, we had.
Mike, let me interrupt just a second.
Chris.
Prior to having. People uh staffed at Station twenty-one would have. The One Ship would have firefighters in the s- in the southern portion of the district responded. Uh, and and used apparatus in the One Ship Station.
I I think so, Mark uh. What's Mark's last name?
Robertson.
Robertson is the the chief there. He lives in One Ship, so I think he would have got this, the One Ship fairly quickly.
If I may. Uh, yeah, they would have responded. The people that lived locally in that area generally would have responded to the station, One Ship, and then staffed, you know, apparatus from that point.
So did they do so with this?
No, because some of those are not returning.
They're not.
Have not returned to our roster.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, but but uh. Had we had. Uh, personnel in the One Ship area. They would have been dispatched at the same time as Colville Station twenty-one.
Correct, and you do have a hand, not even a handful, I'd say one or two people, personnel. For example, Mark Duke is one of them that lives across the street from the One Ship Station and he did respond. I'm not sure if he was delayed because he was. Um, you know, busy doing something before the fire. He was off duty. He wasn't on duty at the time, so he would, but he did eventually respond.
Uh huh, okay, so continue, Mike. Sorry for the interruption. So we took a look at our infrastructure, found a. Lot of things that need to be fixed from doors and windows and. Pipes, including a pretty significant sewer leak right in the middle of the Colville Station. Um, but thanks to Park City Fire for taking. Care of us. Uh. We had to pay them two hundred and five thousand dollars to.
Worth every penny.
But uh, yes, they. Did a great job. They left behind a lot of very helpful reports. Um, I say helpful, uh, somewhat embarrassing in in some cases, and uh we'll talk about that in a minute. Next slide, please. That's Chief, you're up.
Okay, so I'm going to take this slide on training and certification. Now, this is just a general slide. In general, um, we need an all-hazard response is kind of what the federal government or FEMA kind of require of fire departments. Some of those disciplines in general are fire, EMS, hazmat, wildland. And what I'd like to refer to as just specialty, so that could be anywhere from rope, uh, rope training, high-low angle. Extrication, trench, structural collapse, water training, that could be still water or uh re- uh water, moving water, swift water, rather. Um. There could be, you could break that down and look at a lot of different ways, but those are the general categories. Now, when it comes to those disciplines, there's certifications within each of them. I've only listed here just a handful of them. Firefighter one, two. Inspector, investigator, officer, under fire, under EMS, you can go anywhere from EMR, EMTB, AMT, or paramedic. Um, with hazmat, you can do awareness operations, technician, specialist commander, which. In the state of Utah, we have very few specialists and commanders, to be honest with you, but we have quite a few technicians in the state of Utah. Um, and then uh last kind of for wildland would be red card. Um, engine boss, and there's just all kinds of types of team leaders, et cetera. Um, and then, you know, the specialty, which I didn't list, I listed prior. Um, now, just for your information, we don't have firemen with. A lot of these certificates. We're at bare minimum, if behind the curve, if not behind the curve, quite a bit. We. We are in the phase definitely of trying to train. We're trying to implement programs and systems to be able to get to that point where I'd like to be. But we're not the quite there yet. We just wanted to make sure that you knew that that's the direction that we'd like to start going. Is fire EMS especially, because honestly, that's approximately eighty-five, ninety percent of what we do, generally speaking. Hazmat, wildland, and specialties, so, which honestly, the specialties in recent months. Have been in dire needs, so we've had to call Park City to help us quite often with either heavy rescue or. Um, you know, heavy, heavy extrication type stuff, ropes, et cetera, so we would like to be. Able to get to that point eventually, so. Uh, next slide. Um, in this, we just wanted to kind of bring up my my uh, excuse me, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, just fixing the base of the triangle. Those first couple steps, which are just the uh physiolo- physiological needs and safety needs. Everybody needs to fill those safety needs. The firefighters need to fill those safety needs, and a lot of the way that the board is now and has been able to. Get this done is through new new turnout gear. We've ordered that. It's about. Once you order those in today's day and age, it takes anywhere from fifteen to twenty weeks, depending on the manufacturer. To get here, so we're kind of on hold until we get those. Um, all new for our current staff, they're going to have a set of tech gen along with that, which is kind of an all-purpose gear. And then also on top of that, they're going to have their um turnout gear, which is to fight the fires in in the structure. That um, a portion of that costs about a hundred and two. Um, generally, and then additional purchases and staffing um as or staffing increased, so. Um, with me hiring me, obviously, I cost a little bit of money. And then obviously with staffing at the station, not from their homes, that's added additional um overhead also or finance to our finances. But it's definitely needed and has been very useful. So continuing on here, um, the initial phase was to get those SCBA's ordered, which are the self-contained breathing apparatus. Um, we ordered approximately ten of those with. Additional items and then next year, so the second year will uh order ten more. That's to get to eventually twenty to be able to outfit all fire stations and. Most apparatus that are going to have firemen on them for future needs. Um, those uh self-contained breathing apparatus that we ordered were MSAs. They're a great pack. We love them. Um, we actually just received, finished receiving all those, so we do have those and we're trying to put those in service as soon as possible. Um, the second phase of the purchase was the Station twenty-one. We had to change out all the, because of all the. Let's say the storm that happened, we needed to change out the access system, system, so we changed locks and keys. Were kind of even in the middle of discussion about um putting cameras on the stations because. We've had some damage to a couple of the stations, maybe a shotgun shell. Or a BB from a shotgun broke a window that we had just. Replaced, a brand-new window that we just replaced, but so we're we're considering those as options. Um, station repairs, right now, we have garage doors that are thirty, forty years old. Um, they're in disarray. One of them's broken currently, so we're only able to run out of three of the bays. Um, so we're working on that to get those fixed. All these things, basically, what I'm trying to paint the picture of is just that there are additional costs that were not foreseen. And so a command vehicle was ordered. We do have that in place. It's very handy to get to the veh- uh, to the. Emergency in adequate time. With resources. And then, you know, just other items. Um, generally speaking, we're looking into, we had to replace some tiles, some windows, and then we would like eventually, and this is a bigger item, but it's under other. You know, in the next few years is uh maybe some. Um, Nederman system, so they're just to pull out the carbon dioxide or the carbon monoxide, rather, that the vehicles. Create and blacken the walls with, so the firefighters aren't living and breathing that, so.
The dorms are right next to the garage, Ben, correct?
Yep, and actually, that's a hundred percent true, and those doors don't seal very good because they're so antiquated, so. We're going to have to figure something out, either build a wall so the firemen are safe when they sleep and they don't have that carbon monoxide and all that. Cancerous uh particles coming into their dormitories.
Ben, without hijacking your presentation.
Yeah, no problem.
Do you have, as I know you've all been here four months, but. Do you have a sense of how we got into the? Equipment state that we're in, especially with turnout codes in the SCBA's?
Yeah, I think I have a general sense to be able to answer your question, and I and and I'm not trying to throw blame on any individual or any group, but generally speaking. Volunteers do what they can, the best that they can with what they have and that they're given. And so you had a team, which were all volunteers responding from homes. And sometimes because they have to worry about their full-time jobs or careers or different things, their families. Um, the fire service is something that you go, you help, and then you immediately go back home. And then maybe you didn't get the truck back in service and ready to go for the next emergency, right? Or it didn't get cleaned up. Something gets neglected because you always have something. Else that's a priority to you, your family, or whatever. So they they definitely did the best they can or could with what they had, I believe. And so I hope that answers your question a little bit, but I I believe that's kind of the sense of what happened.
Okay.
Um, and then, you know, the total for these expenses spent from capital budget was three hundred and forty thousand, so we had a good uh S nut, or excuse me, nest egg. Um, and we are going to be using a portion of that. Once we get everything in, we'll pay for those invoices, and then I think that was that slide. Can we go to the next one, please?
So let's uh. Let's go into the stabilization phase, which we're in now, which will essentially end when we present our twenty-twenty-three budget. To you guys. Next slide, please. So the first thing we had to do was start with finding out what equipment we had and what condition it was in. This seventy-seven Mack is our quote-unquote parade trucks, not. Uh, I think it takes like six batteries. We got to get it started, but so.
Somewhere in there.
Um. Our rescue trucks are all about twenty years old, however. Uh, and I said, one of them's in the shop now. Seems like one of them's always in the shop. So we had to first find out. What we had, and there were plenty of documents, but there was really no good inventory. Uh, so it was basically the previous chief, myself, one of the captains. We spent two months going around and just touching every piece of equipment and creating. A capital investment worksheet, which I'll show you in a minute. Uh, I think we have about a million and a half dollars of. Trade-in value. Because most of it has got to be sold or or traded in. Um, and then we're starting to declare equipment surplus tomorrow night at our our meeting. We're gonna. Vote to declare some equipment surplus, so we can, we can sell it and put some money into our capital.
If I may add also, just Mike, we we did have some really good success on a brush truck just recently that was added for surplus prior to my arrival. And we were able to make a a good chunk of change off that, so it is working. The plan is working, so.
Next slide, please. So when I show you the capital budget worksheet, in addition to coming up with the invent- inventory. We budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars contribution from our. Our our taxes every year to. Uh. Capital expenditures. We did not put any in this year. Obviously, we spent spent it elsewhere. But we're showing a hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution. Twenty-twenty-two to twenty-six, and that increasing the five hundred thousand. Contribution in twenty-twenty-six and and beyond. And you'll see very shortly that our. Worksheet goes extremely negative just in five years, so next slide, please. You probably can't read all this, and I really don't want you to, but on the left is the inventory we did. We now know every piece of equipment that's a- at the station. Um, and actually, Park Park City gave us an inventory of all the stuff that's on each truck, so we've got a good handle on things. Uh, you'll see in in the upper right-hand corner, annual reserve contribution. There's a hundred and fifty thousand followed by the five hundred thousand. Down below is where we started populating the sheet of when the equipment was going to be replaced. Chief took a whack at it. Uh, I moved everything to the right.
I was very over optimistic.
Next slide, please. But you will see in the bottom right-hand corner, even pushing everything off to the right. Uh, we go negative in twenty-twenty-five and then very negative thereafter, even with a five hundred thousand dollar. Contribution, because we've got some five hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand pieces of dollars, piece of equipment to to replace, so. Um, we're really hurting our capital.
And let me just add to that really quick too, Mike, if you don't mind, but um. In years past, the impact fees have never been implemented. They are currently being looked into by Zions, and hopefully that will help us offset some of these costs. So we're kind of in the middle of that, in the gathering information stage currently. Are we all perfect? So these are our stations. Um, One Ship and Hennefer Station is suffering from lack of use, basically with nobody being there. We have AC units not being, that are kind of going down. We have holes in roofs in One Ship, in the ceiling of the bay. Um, a lot of these things were previous, but with people not living there and using toilets and showers and sinks and different things like that. Things start to, you know. Go awry and they start just, it's a vacant building with nobody attending to it. We try to send firefighters. About once a week to each station, if not multiple times, to start the vehicles that are there. Um, but with between call volume and other duties and then, you know, trying to fix Colville Station. Um, it's just kind of difficult right now, so we're just trying to make it work as best we can. Looking ahead, we need to, we need dorms at the stations if we're going to staff those, so that's, we're talking about that in our capital um subcommittee. And so we need to talk about staffing uh One Ship and Hennefer eventually. And if we do that, there's no bedrooms there, so there's nowhere for firefighters to live in. Currently, the stations are open, open to the public for use of, you know, meetings and things like that. Um, depending on how everything comes out, that might have to change for just a period of time, so we can have firefighters. Um, living there. And then the last point there, the capital um projects committee has been fantastic, and they've kind of. Helped us figure out where we need to spend. Uh, dat- very data-driven and where to spend these finances, so. The next slide. So currently, we're working, like Roger had mentioned earlier, we have three or four different subcommittees. We're working on policies and procedures. One of the major ones are personnel and procurement policies in place. Um, we have a game plan with that, and I really like it. That was um suggested by Ryan Stack, the attorney. And. Once we have those personnel policies adopted, amended, we'll bring them to you as the county council for approval. And then we would like to transition into having an employee status or a combination fire department status and moving away from volunteerism. Even though we'll still have part-time paid-on-call firefighters, that'll help us also. And then we have a policy committee established, um, and then adopting some new SOPs. Um, on the operations side, but we haven't gotten too far with that because I'm one man, so I'm trying my best to handle a whole bunch of stuff, so. Next slide. So I just wanted to touch a little bit. This is a consensus standard, which is an NF- NFPA standard, so National Fire Protection Agency. This is NFPA seventeen-twenty, which kind of gives us, it's not an arbitrary number, we don't just pull this out of the air, but for rural rural areas, less than five hundred people per square mile. We want to try and stick to the NFPA stack consensus standards the best we possibly can. They suggest for an initial fire attack, if you read that little note on the bottom. Uh, we need that, we would like to try and have six personnel. And then response time in minutes of up to fourteen. So we definitely don't have that right now, and that's kind of what we're running into issues, is I have a two-person-only engine for. The entire fire district. And so we're not even adequate enough, and it's, it definitely is a is a concern and a safety concern to me. Um, we have a senior firefighter, just like Ryan Smith on the One Ship Fire. He handled it great, but we also had another junior firefighter that we hired as an apprentice. And um. You know, he's learning, and so Ryan really was pretty much by himself until Park City got there and South Summit got there and everyone else, so. We are definitely understaffed. We'd like to try and hit that. Next slide.
See, A H J.
I'm sorry, area having jurisdiction. You're what?
What was it?
Area having jurisdiction. So on these slides, and we had a council or a board member who created these for us. Like I said, we want to do everything that we possibly can that's data-driven, so um Brian, could you hit that first link? And we're just hoping this works, because this is a lot of good work that Ari Ionides put in place for us. It's awesome.
Just pretend it's up there and.
He's almost there. I can see it on his computer. What this link is, is basically, oh, perfect. If you just zoom in a little bit to where Echo Reservoir is on the top of your screen. Yeah, right about there is fine. As you can kind of see, scroll up just a teeny bit. As you can see here, all these are all the calls from twenty-twenty-two that we're currently year-to-date on. Um, as you can see, and this goes for twenty-twenty-one, which we can toggle on and off on the left side. It goes by what types of calls for each color. And then also, it shows you just in general where the bulk of the calls are occurring, so between. Colville, basically, and then all the way over into One Ship, Colville, and Rockport Estates area, so. And we, you know, trending that direction with the new um subdivisions and everything going in, it's only going to get busier in that, in that area. And then, Brian, would you mind just toggling off twenty-twenty-two and toggling on twenty-twenty-one? Perfect, thank you. I think both of them were on, so you did get there. These are the twenty-twenty-one calls. We don't have a huge call volume, but again, it shows you that trend. Of where most of those calls are happening, and then if you don't mind. Un- uh toggle two thousand twenty-one, turn it off, and then turn on tax data.
Wish you'd take a more.
And, and this is kind of amazing. So this is where the bulk of the population is, is as you can see, that Wanship Fire Station, and that's kind of why I wanted to point that out, is crucial in being able to handle the emergencies that we're dealing with, with the bulk of the population uh, further to the south of our district. And so between Colville and Wanship, we definitely need two stations stood up yesterday, basically. I could put one up there for you, Chris. You just have to pay for it.
Is that your call up there?
I'm just teasing. But anyway, if you would log out of that one and then go to the next link, I just wanted to show you just briefly. I had a firefighter that I know do a heat map, but basically on that next link, Brian, thank you. And as he pulls it up, let me just kind of preface it this way. Um, this shows you, we took the whole eastern side into account. You can turn on or off these Google Sheets, but basically I put red for Hennepur Fire Station. Uh, blue for Colville, green for Wanship. I included South Summits too, but basically what this is saying is that if we had an ambulance, and this also goes for fire engines, even though they're heavier apparatus, they're a little bit slower on the freeways, right? But in fifteen minutes, that's as far as they can travel from those locations, so we can hit most of our fire district um, without. Well, basically between Wanship and Colville Fire Stations. So those are gonna be two very crucial fire stations in the near future. We can even cross over into the Hennepur area, especially to the city in fifteen minutes, and we can go up I eighty, if you scroll down just a little bit, Brian. Um, we can hit the bulk of I eighty almost all the way to the Wyoming border. Nope, you're okay. So, and then you can always, you know, you guys have this in your packet as a link, so you can toggle on or off fire stations and you can change the minutes. And it's pretty amazing how much we can cover actually out of two fire stations. This is not, it's a, a fireman that I know that did this, but the previous link that you saw, that tax data and information, that was Ari's.
Let me ask this. So on this, you have the red, the blue. Uh, what's the, what's the legend? Like if, if you're coming from this station and you have a fifteen, that's fifteen minutes, that mean from this station.
You can get all the way up to I eighty.
On these red lines to fifteen minutes.
Correct. Exactly.
Blue, as you're saying, from here, you can get a little blue into, into.
And the kind of.
But a little up Chalk Creek and a little down here.
Exactly. Now, if you toggle off, for example, let's turn off the green one, Brian. Just hit the Linus button. To your right. Right, just right there. It toggles it off, and it's pretty amazing, the holes that are left in the fire district that we don't cover in fifteen minutes. So again, we're always trying to strive for that NFPA consensus standard if possible.
But uh, a fair bit of this is outside your district.
Yeah, from what.
Mutual aid, I guess.
We would definitely, but if we had Wanship stood up, we could hit that hole and cover it very easily. Because coming from Colville to get to, for example, um, it's not Rockport Estates. What is the one on the other side of Rockport on that uh, east side? What's that? Is it Rockport?
What do you mean on the east side?
No, where you, where your parents lived, Derek? Is it just Rockport? Oh, okay. Yeah, I guess it's just called Rockport. There's a neighborhood, so that one takes quite a ways, because you have to come all the way to the south, go around Rockport and then come back up to get into that neighborhood there. No, you're just doing just fine. That's what I expected.
Does this uh, Wanship Station, if it were stood up, as you say, does it provide much relief when you turn the green back on, getting up into?
The Tollgate area.
Tollgate area and.
One hundred percent.
Sky and whatnot.
Yes, it will be a drastic change of response times for Blue Sky, Tollgate and Rockport Estates.
For years, there was discussion about actually building a station uh, uh, when we went up there. I don't remember if you were on board then, but we took it.
That was prior to me.
We're driving and it was winter time still, it's snowy, but we went up to a parcel that was in the middle of Tollgate. And I was just wondering if, what your views are on that, or you think this is the first step in that, may, maybe or maybe not.
I'm not really prepared to answer that question tonight, Chris. Maybe we can handle that another time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I've got a, just a fundamental question on the fifth, so that um, fire standard, NFPA fire standard is for rural areas is a fifteen, fourteen-minute response time. We've got a fifteen-minute chart here. Tell me what that means practically. We're, if, yeah, let's assume that eighty to eighty-five percent of our calls are medical calls, which I think is probably in the ballpark. If that's the case, is that the right number for actually making a difference and being able to keep somebody alive? That's in a critical, critical situation, or is that seven minutes? Is it ten minutes? Is it twelve? I assume the farther you get away, the longer the response time, the less positive outcomes you're gonna have for very serious injuries or accidents or medical conditions. What is, what's the right balance between overstaffed, overspending? Six minutes in a rural area is gonna cost you twenty times as much as, and you're not gonna get the bang for the buck out of it. How do you measure that?
No, it's a good question. Um, the, the way that I'd like to answer that question is this. There's a reasonable expectation when you build and live in a rural area that you're not gonna get um, the adequate resources, maybe in the allotted time that is expected from hospitals and different other consensus standards. So that would be about six, seven minutes would be on the, the long end. Basically, if you're having a cardiac arrest and you're, you have, you know, lower brain function, function after six, seven minutes, you may not survive. Less survivability, survivability after that point. Um, however, if we can achieve at least this fifteen or fourteen-minute status by standing up certain stations, then we can at least get to that rural standard and help the community out. I hope that answers that question a little bit. Stay within our finances.
Yeah, I guess it kind of does. I mean, if we, we shrunk this down to, this is fifteen minutes. We shrunk this down to ten, which is somewhere in between.
There's a lot more holes and then less overlap on that. And you can actually do that, uh, and I would suggest we probably do that um, on your own time. You have this, you can kind of play with that, toggle it on and off. All you would do is just change those fifteen minutes down to ten minutes, and you can see even more holes that are, that are not being covered or overlapped.
And I would also suggest that for some parts of, in particular, our new population, people that have been here more recently, within the last five years. They probably don't have the same reasonable expectation for response times because of where they've come from. That people that have grown up in a rural area for a long period of time.
I think you nailed that right on the head. And then also, talking a little bit about future growth, that expectation's most likely gonna change. So, yeah, I think you nailed that on the head.
Chief, can I ask one other question?
Absolutely.
At least one other. When you say standing up, say Wanship, do you believe that the physical plant there has the raw materials of, a- and now you need to create staffing and dorm rooms and things there, or do you? Or, or do we have something to start with, say on Wanship?
No, that's a good question, Chris. I think we have something to start with. We already have the apparatus. We just need to make sure that we're maintaining them, so we'd have to put some money into apparatus to make sure they're maintained. But once the firemen are there, um, we would probably have to shut down that station to the community just for a minute to maybe put up a quick wall or two for some bedrooms. And then buy some uh, you know, some expenses for people living in the station, like for cookware and different things. But I think we have a really good start, and then eventually work on dormitories. Um, open back up to the public for public rooms and things like that. Uh, I know the water company is really big on using that fire station as their meeting place, and it's a big meeting place in that community. So we can open up eventually, but we do have a good starting point where we wouldn't have to spend a lot of money immediately.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that, Chief? Um, not needing, it wouldn't cost a lot of money initially in order to stand that up, to stand it up to the full extent of what it would really need to be in order for it to be a long-term functioning station, Wanship. What do you anticipate that costing long, for the long term, to have that as a fully functioning station?
That's good.
Rooms and apparatus.
Yeah, and it, it depends on how far we go. So as we worked on those different models, three to five, five to ten plus, it changes. We'd like to start off with two personnel there, because with, if we can staff Colville with, you know, let's say four staff members and then two out of there, we can have six people meet that NFPA standard within the first, you know, ten to fifteen minutes of an initial attack for a structure fire, for example. Or we could have even a better response time for EMS for approximately eighty to ninety percent of the population in the district. So, cost-wise, depending on if, because adequately, I mean, and this is years down the road, but we'd like to probably get that station up to have at least four personnel there, a captain, an engineer, maybe two firefighters. But we don't have the budget for that, and it would take some growth and, and a lot of changes to be put in place before we can get to that point. So, um, initially with two personnel, um, currently, we still have the volunteer status. We're paying each volunteer for a twelve-hour shift. Two hundred and thirty-five dollars is a stipend. And uh, when, once we change, gets, or once we have our personnel policies in, onboard, that's gonna change to um, possibly having a full-time status, depending on what the A C B decides. So I hope that kind of answers that. So what did we, what do we budget? Maybe one person at twenty-seven thousand dollars a year? One shift, I think we talked about today.
Yes.
Don't hold me to that, but uh, right around twenty-seven thousand-ish.
And so as it progresses, there'd be a range and kind of variety, and that would be really depending on what we hear from the public regarding the service level and, and the capacity that we needed to meet that.
Yeah, yes, uh, yeah, correct. And then um, you know, the beauty about this is we've never had a very great service here. This is gonna be much better. And over the largest population, they're gonna be covered, potentially EMS and fire, depending on the county decision on that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, Chief and Mike, I wanna, don't wanna cut you short too badly, but I, I would really like to, uh, we, we've had you start late. We need to keep going if we can, because I, I wanna start uh, this taxation workshop at five P M and we have.
I think we can wrap up pretty quick if you don't have.
Let us talk a couple of slides about money and then.
Yeah, let's do that.
So next slide, please. I, the chairman of the finance committee, I get to talk about the uh, the budget. So the end of our stabilization phase is gonna be, like I said, when we come in with our twenty-twenty-three budget. We did a pro forma, which we presented to the A C B at the last meeting, and it looks something like this. The first number, five hundred thousand should actually be five fifty. Revenue generation's about five hundred thousand from taxes now and fifty thousand from other things. Our anticipated expenses to run this machine is, are eight hundred and ten thousand dollars. And if we put in the budget, that hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution to capital I mentioned, we're some four hundred thousand dollars short. Next slide, please. So a, so a quick look at what we're gonna look like moving forward. At the end of this year, uh, our projections are, our operating fund's gonna have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in it, and our capital fund will have five hundred and twenty thousand dollars in it after spending that three hundred and forty thousand we mentioned earlier. The four hundred and fifty thousand, if we did nothing, is barely enough money, seed money to get us going for next year. So twenty-twenty-three, we're looking for money. We already have an impact fee study going on. Um, four hundred thousand dollars is our bogey of what we think we could get from impact fees. The grant season is over for this year, but we're gonna dive in to grants next year, try to get some fifty thousand dollars. And then the rest is gonna come from truth and taxation, and we can talk more about that, that later if you want to.
There's the, uh.
And I think that's the important finance slide.
Uh, truce, truism that you do not have an impact fee today.
Correct, that is true.
I don't know, forty percent along with the impact.
To get that in place, especially with the projected growth.
We, we're at the model phase. We gotta give them a model of where we're gonna spend the money, and that's where we are now.
I just got an email back from Zions. They're looking for a little bit more information, even they're still gathering information for their analysis.
Doing that as quickly as we can. You wanna go on to o- other stuff, uh, Chris?
If you, if you can just hit the high points.
Okay, let's go to the next, next slide and let, let Chief uh, finish up.
Um, we do have that third-party study coming, and I know that's about approximately eight to nine months out. Um, timing is critical, however, we have a lot of decisions, at least for the North Summit Fire District, where that may not be the best, to be honest with you, to wait for that decision. I think it is good. Um, but I think we can make some tough decisions now and still be able to pivot, because I personally, I don't think that they're gonna be able to give us much more data than we haven't already gathered ourselves. And if they do have something groundbreaking, we can always pivot just like in any small business and make a change right then, and I don't think it would change the model too much, but the model drives our future. Go to the next slide. Coming soon, we could possibly have, depending on what the county council decides, EMS, which will help with our infrastructure, our staffing, our equipment and training. No longer will we have EMS and fire be separate. There will be one and the same, and they will jump staff all apparatus. And I'm kind of going here quick, if you want me to slow down.
That's good. No, you're doing well.
Um, oh, okay, we'll, we'll do this one. Source of funds. Brian's gonna make me go even quicker. No, you're good. Go, go ahead. Okay, so phase one will be expensive, impact fees. We're working on wildland fires. Uh, actually, this year it's been pretty good, because we've had all those monsoon rains and stuff coming in, and then we're looking, at least we've been on record in the last two meetings, touching on truth and taxation in our A C B. And Mike, do you want to go on or?
No.
Okay, we got, um, on this one.
Give you a lesson.
Yeah, I don't wanna give you a lesson. You guys have gone through this before. But uh, twenty-twenty-two calendar year entity property tax increase requirements for T N T. The next slide, Brian. Oh, okay, sorry. Chris is rushing me, so I'm panicked.
Must be telling us something. I won't go to the T N T.
Honor before October first. Currently, our A C B is considering truth and taxation. There's not, not been a decision made, or it's just a couple of discussions that have been made in our A C B. But the first two steps are to notify the county council of a date, time and place for our public hearing and where our budget will be discussed. And then the second step, notifications of the intent to increase property and taxes if we decide to move forward with that.
And just as an aside, the schedule for doing twenty-twenty-two truth and taxation, there are, there are mileposts. You know those dates offhand as to when the A C B would have to just make a recommendation.
Yeah, we, we do have those dates. It's a whole spreadsheet, or not a spreadsheet, but just a piece of paper that has all the dates spelled out.
But if they're coming up, I mean, it's like.
October first is the first deadline.
Or October, is it October?
And it's, it's at a deadline for the A C B or the council.
It's both. Yeah, so we have to give notice. You guys have to approve it, and then.
Notice we're planning on doing it, yeah.
So we're gonna talk about this, I, I hope tomorrow at our, at our.
Cross our fingers. Yes, tomorrow we'll have some discussion. Yep, our A C B meeting.
My guess is. I think what I'd like to add for tomorrow is um, a procedural discussion, so that we have the timeframe down. And so that we set some milestones for the A C B in terms of our discussions and the public engagement and how. I, I think at our last meeting, I asked all the members of the A C B to consider how we do the outreach to the public to make sure this stuff is well attended, because the, the problem is that, you know, you you provide notices through the public website, through the county website, flyers.
We will try and make it super easy for the public.
People miss it. They don't come. Everybody's got busy lives. They've got kids, kids in school and sports and jobs, and then you make a decision and people say, how come I didn't know? Why didn't you talk to me about it? And this is not something that, given the fourteen-year gap, we have the same situation. The county went thirty years without having any kind of a tax raise on the general fund, because we had growth supported it for so long. Um, so this is one where the public does need to engage. And we need to figure out the means to make sure the message gets out. We set up those meetings. We're probably gonna have to have some special meetings of the A C B um, as we move this forward to make sure that we can get that public feedback and, and they can understand what's being proposed, and we can respond to questions and comments from them, so.
And this is my worrisome side, but I do want, worry that, you know, we haven't, the, the district hasn't taken a, a tax increase in, like you said, fourteen years. If we wait any longer, I, I just worry that we're gonna be even more underfunded, and we might have to take a bigger bite later, and that's a little worrisome to me.
Well, given the four hundred thousand dollar shortfall or whatever that was, I don't know that we've got the luxury of waiting longer.
Theoretically, you could make it one more year. Scooch some money out of capital operating and do one more year, but.
That'd be pushing it.
Yeah, that'd be pushing it. This, um, you know, this, this. This, um, you know, this, this analysis, uh, points out what you see in, um, every underfunded business, uh, everywhere. It was my job for many years to go out and shop for businesses for my company. Uh, and what you see as a business starts to fail is the first thing that goes is replacement of G F A, gross fixed, fixed assets. So your capital budget goes to zero. You pay all your operating expenses. You're able to keep water flowing at the sink. Um, that's about it. But ten years pass, and suddenly you don't have firefighting equipment. You go to garage junk. Uh, and you're five million dollars behind in apparatus. Uh, and, you know, I, I wouldn't be surprised if that, you know, off the top of my thumb, if that's some close to where you are.
That'd be a good replacement cost number, yes.
Yeah. And then in conclusion, Mike.
I think that, I think that's it. Uh, thank you for listening.
Mister Chair of the ACB, do you have any closing comments? Thanks very much for your service, both of you. This is exciting to to see progress being made, and we'll obviously have a lot of meetings as we plumb the depths of truth and taxation and, and as we move further toward implementing this plan.
See you two tomorrow.
Yeah, and just.
I want, just as an aside, when are we starting that meeting tomorrow?
Why? Whenever you want to start it, sir. It's six o'clock.
Oh, I thought it was five. It's on my calendar for five.
Well, you'll be.
I'm pretty sure we decided five, but we can change that.
I have it on my phone at five, but I would prefer.
How about I touch bases with you?
Anybody who wants to get there at five, that's, that'd be fine.
Copy. Um, just so you know, though, a lot of this data was put in by the board members. They're doing a lot of good work, and they're working really hard at, at doing this. And it's a group effort. So I wish I could take a lot of the credit, but I can't. A lot of these guys are doing that hard work.
I heard a little bird chirp saying that it was published at six o'clock.
I'm going to go with whatever you tell me.
I say.
That's why we said, Chris, what time do you want to have it?
Six P M.
Actually, Roger.
Six.
Six P M.
You good with that? That's when I'm, I'm showing up at six P M.
Okay, sounds good.
Start it for it and get it all done before I get there.
We'll be there.
Okay, thanks, gentlemen. Okay, the next item on our agenda is, uh, to talk about a public visioning uh, process that, and I, I, is it uh, Derek and Madeline that are leading us through this?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, good.
All right, I will keep my comments brief with this introduction. The background on this project, this is a community visioning project, seeking input uh, from the community, the various groups in our community on what they want Summit County to look like in the course of the next twenty-plus years. So this initiative grew out of the council's strategic meeting last July. Um, as the year progresses, was something that the county manager brought to Communication and Public Engagement Department and myself to begin putting some things together. So, working with Jana, we have a steering committee group for this that consists of myself, uh, Madeline, who is joining us on Zoom from planning, also Peter Barnes from planning, Pamela Bello and Emily Quentin, and that's the steering group around this. Um, the purpose of us meeting today is just to make sure that we're on the same page with your goals on what you would like to see from this community visioning project. So we'll be briefly reviewing the R F P, making sure that at the high level, we're looking for the right things as we seek a consultant to help us engage in this process over the next several months. Uh, quickly, a timeline for this, the steering committee first met in June. We spent July uh, strategically analyzing some other community visioning projects that we've seen, both in the state and across the country. Also putting together this draft of the R F P. At this stage, again, we're just looking for your blessing and input that we're heading in the right direction with this. And our intent is to post this R F P next week to be able to select a consultant for this process by mid-September, and then have the date of October tenth be our kickoff for this process. From there, we'll continue over the next several months, likely into, uh, August or September of twenty-twenty-three, collecting data. And at that time, we will be able to formulate the data, present it both to council and to the public and say, this is what we're hearing from the community on these issues that we've identified and the course of the county over the next twenty-plus years. Uh, I will turn the time over now to Madeline, who's going to do a overview of the R F P itself.
Great, thanks, Derek. Um, all right, we're taking a look at this request for proposals. We're again, as Derek said, we're seeking a consultant to drive this community visioning process. I'm just going to hit the highlights, and then I'll be focusing in on three key areas for input. Um, page one, which you can see on the screen now, gives an outline of the project, um, a drafted schedule, and you'll notice that, you know, in order to hit this projected or desired project start date of October tenth, we really do need to get the R F P posted by August fifteenth. And we took this, um, from the council direction, that this was a big priority, and that we wanted to get, hit the ground running with this and get the, the feedback as soon as possible. So that's, uh, what led to the sort of ambitious timeline that you see here. On page two of the R F P document, um, you'll see, you see that we've asked the consultant to present their findings from the community visioning no later than September of twenty-twenty-three, which is to allow adequate time to gather data from a range of community members, including seasonal workers and part-time residents. Throughout the R F P, we emphasize the importance of hearing from people from traditionally underrepresented backgrounds, including the non-English speaking community and senior populations. The consultants are asked to present a comprehensive work plan that considers other county and regional initiatives as well, so that we can capitalize on opportunities for collaboration, but also avoid overburdening the public, um, with any, you know, surveys, too many surveys at one time, things like that. We are leaning on the expertise of the consultant to propose a plan that is going to leverage existing community members, encourage new and consistent participation in the public process, and utilize both qualitative and quantitative data to identify community priorities as well as strategies to meet those priorities. And with the rest of our time today, I just want to focus on three key sections to get input. So we're going to be looking specifically at the purpose, scope of work, and deliverables sections. Um, I know we're running short on time here, so we'll try and keep this brief. Um, we're looking for feedback that, that I would, I, I would describe to my sixth grade students as like big idea feedback. So are there any big concepts or desired outcomes that are missing from what you see here in this drafted R F P? And I'm going to be taking notes as you speak, and then Derek also jot notes as we go. Um, so starting with page two of this R F P document, the purpose section. We have these four key statements. If you could scroll to that, Brian, that'd be great. We have these four key sections, uh, four, uh, statements that are meant to guide the visioning process. So are there any big concepts or desired outcomes that are not covered by these four statements? Oh, scroll back up. It's number two. There you go. Purpose. Yep, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, as I look at this, um, it may be an item D, but what I'm missing is any kind of a concept of preparing and structuring growth, where that should be steered. Um, you know, we talk about future land use. I guess it's buried in there. Would you guys use the G word, please? Because it's important to elicit that feedback from the community and to frame it well. Um, housing, development, transportation, health, and climate action. Um, it's missing open space um, as a concept. And I think that that needs to be called out. Again, it's probably buried in future land use.
Are you, are you, uh, maybe comfortable if we added a D to say develop strategic plan to form future land use, housing, development, managed growth, open space, just adding.
Management of growth, commercial areas. I mean, I think it's, it's broad.
Is she want, they indicated that to stay on schedule, and the fifteenth is coming up on Monday, I believe.
Yeah.
So today's action day, D day for this, if we can.
Okay, correct.
But like I said, let's, let's skip both of those concepts just.
So could you? If you could change it such that you have, uh, you know, develop strategic plan, inform future land use.
Would it be, Roger, from what I'm hearing, as far as, um, in calling out like commercial zones and some of these other areas, would it suffice to talk about future zoning and land use and, and kind of being inclusive of, of that zoning? Because from what I'm hearing, it's, it's the, where's open space? Where should more growth be? Where's commercial? Or is, am I missing, or am I misunderstanding?
I think, I think, you know, it could be to inform future land use and growth mitigation, maybe the way to say it. Because I think the zoning is probably in the land use, including as it relates to housing, uh, development, uh, both residential and commercial, transportation, health, and climate action planning, I think that would work. Um, Doug, I would ask if, um, I'm not sure that I see environmental in there as it relates to water.
Yeah, it, I, I, I think hopefully it'll, 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 yeah, it'll sort its way out in the land planning, because it really is in many respects a subset of that. Um, and I, I just kind of trust that you won't leave fire, uh, out of, uh, out of your, uh, out of your, um, uh, your realm. Uh, it is my understanding, uh, and I, I, I don't have complete data here. It's my understanding that Park City is likewise, uh, going out for an R F P on exactly the same subject.
That's correct.
And I, I wonder if there shouldn't be closer cooperation between these two efforts. Um, they are our citizens and vice versa, so, um.
We do, we, we are planning on collaborating with them with this process.
And, and have, have you, have you guys spoken? Do you know where they are in their process or, um?
Yeah. Really high level. Um, that's one next step. So I'll let you go ahead, Maddie.
I was just going to say that I've spoken to Gretchen, their planning director, and their R F P is not actually for community visioning. It's for their general plan. They completed their community visioning quite recently. Um, so they're doing some internal work on, on, on changing a few of the things that came back from their consultant and the community visioning, but their next big step is to act, is to embark on the, the, you know, revising their general plan. So we are working in coordination with Park City, but the effort is not exactly aligned with where we are in the time, in the timeline.
Um, sure, okay. It would, it would just be nice to know more about what they're doing to make sure, again, we're, we're, uh, making uh, maximum use of all our efforts and, and most importantly, that we are cooperating with Park City whenever we can.
And the visioning project was one of the ones that we reviewed as we put this R F P together. So we're familiar with their work.
Uh, and Derek, have you captured the proposed edits to sub paragraph two D?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's.
I have a couple of questions yet, you know, before we move on. Um, I'm curious as to how we inform the community as to what I would consider the what ifs. Um, what are projecting, what projected growth do we see in the community? What infrastructure are we going to need for that, uh, that projected growth? And as the community decides, well, we want to change that projected growth to something else. Uh, what limitations does that bring to the community?
Sure, one of this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, yeah, one of the strategies that we called out in the, um, deliverables section was the use of, of, um, scenario-based planning, which I, I think is a big opportunity to, to inform the public about the potential future outcomes, uh, and make decisions based off of that scenario planning. So that's what I would say. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Derek.
No, just that, uh, we can add something about scenario planning and, uh, future expectations into that subsection, Glenn.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Madeline, let's keep moving.
Okay, so that, if we're done giving feedback on the purpose, the next section would be scope of work. Um, so if you scroll down, Brian, yep, it's number four. Perfect. So, scope of work, the intention here is not to create an exhaustive list of strategies that the consultant mu- might use, but rather to highlight areas of particular interest or importance to the county. So again, are there any of these big concepts or desired outcomes that we're missing?
Yeah, I think on the third bullet, under fourth, after incentivizing, let's say, afterwards, and maximizing. Okay.
Incentivizing and maximizing community participants.
Participation.
We have that.
As needed, needs to be there, right? And how are we, I know that we, we had a discussion about whether this process would be countywide or whether we would have one visioning for Eastern Summit County and one for, uh, the basin. I think as part of this, I'm wondering about the scope of work. We've got this leverage existing community leaders, and I wonder if we want to do that in broad regional areas. Um, and if there's a way to close it up, or how we make sure that eastern parts of the county, which are the smaller parts of the county, are heard in terms of their values and visions, and that it doesn't just get overwhelmed by, um, a larger group on the west side. It may not reflect those same values. How do we, how do we get data that allows us to discriminate and understand various areas that may be different?
So I can speak to that, Madeline. One thing that we've identified in here is working with the consultant to identify those subgroups or demographics and develop metrics to ensure that we're getting the number of responses from each of those group, not just an overall number. So for example, if that's, uh, school age, kids K through twelve, or just high schoolers or eastside residents, making sure that we have X responses from that group that is significant versus just saying we want to get two thousand responses from everyone in the county.
I'm okay with that, but I'd like to make sure that when we get a final report, that we're able to discriminate in some way and understand not only sort of the general concepts that are common among the entire county, but are there special concerns of basin and park city that are substantially different than maybe in Camas and Woodland, that may be substantially different than Heather Coifal and and Longship? Are there consistencies among them all? Can we, just the way the chief did with, you know, some of the issues, um, with firefighting, turning buttons on and off, where you can add subtract things and, and really have a clear understanding.
Uh huh, yeah. Concept real quickly. Um, you'll notice that it's mentioned many times throughout the R F P, an emphasis on getting data from those who are under, traditionally underrepresented, or those who aren't typically involved in civic activities. But I think we could call out that a little bit more clearly, or what I would encourage Derek and Maddie to do is when you're going through the interview process, uh, or even your scoping meeting, once you choose your consultant, that you really address this issue specifically. But, you know, ask the consultant how they would handle that and what tools or methods they have for doing that.
And I think that let's, let, the, I, and I assume, I shouldn't, but I assume that all groups doing this work understand that certain communities access their information different than others. So Instagram may work well for, actually, it's probably maybe it's TikTok. I don't know what, what works for younger groups anymore, but whatever works for them may not be what works for me as an older member of the population. Um, Spanish-speaking groups are going to be different than English-speaking groups. Um, so we need to make sure that, it says here, the multimodal, let's not get lost. Let's make sure we understand also that regionally, some of that access may be a little. Let's make sure we understand also that regionally, some of that access may be a little bit different.
Yeah. And that was a common discussion point we had in our group when putting this together. Um, at least initially in, in, in also talking to Melina, is this idea that this effort has to be different than what we've traditionally done before. We're looking for innovation. And, um, Maddie and Derek and the rest of the team have done a lot of research to find out other communities and what they have done that isn't the traditional, let's send out a survey and see what we get back. But it is a variety of methods, whether it's focus groups, surveys, open houses, pulling people at the grocery store, putting stuff on doors, whatever it may be. Um, and that's why we're also reserving quite a bit of budget to this effort because that, that one-on-one touch point is expensive, but it's really, really valuable. And, um, they will be emphasizing that with the consultant.
And I think a careful selection of those, those leaders within communities can be helpful. And that would include, you know, probably, uh, some of the religious organizations that we have, some of the nonprofit organizations that we have, government leadership, uh, just as means to try and leverage as much information as possible and allow them to feel a sense of ownership in terms of how they facilitate the process.
Okay, so, um, Madeline. You still have, at the wheel.
Okay. Uh, and our last section that we're going to be looking at is the deliverables. So that starts right below in section five. Thanks, Brian. Um, so we've divided this into five buckets for the deliverables. Um, this section can be more specific, but again, it's not meant to be exhaustive. We are going to be asking the consultant to, you know, present a very comprehensive work plan that would include all of this. Um, so it will be spelled out more clearly by the consultants themselves. But if there are any big concepts that we're missing, please let us know.
I would like to, you know, in terms of the public engagement process, I'm mindful that when Park City did their visioning, which was, oh, I don't know, maybe nineteen, two thousand nineteen. There were, and that's when they developed their goal of taking bold action on a number of, of criteria that they got feedback on. I went to a couple of those meetings and to some degree, you see the same faces at the meetings. You see people, people that are, are deeply engaged in the community on specific issues, showing up time after time. But if you count, if you do the headcount and you take the staff and you take the research organizations, people out, you realize that you're left with maybe twenty people representing a population of eight thousand people. And that the data may not be useful. So one of the things I would like to make sure that we get is every time a meeting is scheduled, I'd like to get, have the, the, the company that's doing the research provide staff with a report of the number of people that were there that attended the meeting. And I'd like staff, I, I, I don't know how we do it, but I'd like to know if we're just seeing the same faces again and again. The same twelve people, fifteen people that are guiding policy throughout the county, because this really does have to be the people's process. And the more engagement that we have, we should be having 200 people showing up at these meetings. And in a way, so they're not just being lectured to, so that they're providing feedback that's meaningful. That's where the magic is. Otherwise, it's junk data that we get. It's not going to be helpful.
And that's an area of emphasis we have placed in this is ensuring that we're coming at this from a variety of different approaches, whether that's public meetings, but also as Jana mentioned, knocking on doors. Um, really reaching out and reviewing this throughout the process to check and see we're not hearing from people in Francis, for example. So we need to refocus our efforts to get to Francis. Um, just making sure that we're getting accurate representation from all of our different communities and demographics.
And again, a focus on those who don't traditionally involved in our civic discussions.
And, and I think that's why in the conversations with, um, with the group that it's really exciting to be looking at a process that is using so many different potential resources to outreach to members of our community. Because we do again and again, see the same people that come to meetings and provide public input and um, even on surveys and things that have been done from various organizations within the community. It's, you know, similar listservs that are used to be able to get information out for the online surveys. And so with this, I think the intention and, and how I've read the RFP as well is that really getting as much varied input as possible, using a variety of different approaches. And also collecting that demographic information so that we understand what zip codes people are living in, so that we can tease that information out. Um, that it could be in theory provided to municipalities if they have interest of using that information or toggling it online. And being able to also look at, at the other components, um, with the demographic information. So I, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Roger. I think it's critical that, that we hear from, from a variety of people within our community and not just those people that have interest in specific subjects.
Got it. Thank you very much for the feedback. We'll incorporate these changes and get the RFP posted as soon as possible. Derek, anything else?
Uh, oh, sorry, Chris.
Derek?
I was just gonna say thanks to Jana and Melina and their help with this process. We're looking forward to moving on this.
I, I just want to say, I think you've got a, a, a great committee. And I think this is a great start. And I'll be curious to see what types of firms respond to this. I'm sure that there are some for whom this is right, center plate in their wheelhouse. But, uh, it, it's, it's, it's not the kinds of firms I'm used to seeing. So I'll be eager to see that. But thanks very much. I, uh, we've got quite a crowd gathering here and I don't want to, uh, shortchange that discussion at all. I would like to spend just a very few minutes with Jen Wesselhoff of the Chamber, if she's still here on, uh, a matter which I think we can deal with fairly quickly, uh, which would be discussion and possible approval of the calling of the 2011 transient room tax revenue bonds. And, uh, Matt Levitt and Brian Baker.
So Brian Baker, I don't think he's still on. I think he might've had to drop off. We can make this quick and give you a couple of minutes of time. Um.
You got five minutes.
The, the.
Four minutes.
Was interested in calling the, the transient room tax bonds that were issued back in twenty eleven. These were council or county issued debt. So it would take an action of the council to call the bond. Um, the outstanding amount is roughly seven hundred and sixty one thousand dollars for which the chamber bureau will compensate the county for that difference.
Yeah. And, uh, as, as I, I remember this transaction, this bond was issued in order to help the chamber outfit the tenant improvements in the visitor's center in the, in the building just to the south of us here. And, uh, as I read the staff report, uh, you have no prepayment penalty. They're callable without cost. There's some six thousand dollars in accrued interest that would be paid. And that, uh, you would, and you have the funds on hand and, and, uh, your interest rate uh, is able to be repriced. And I think there was a window in May that would have raised it from some three percent up to four and four fifty-five or something, if I remember correctly. And so, um, this seems to make good sense. Uh, and, uh, it's, it's styled as, uh, a discussion and possible approval. Do any of you have any concerns with, uh, with the chambers using some surplus funds to prepay this bond? Yeah. You have problems? Okay, Douglas?
Uh, no, I'm fine with that. It's just what a world we're in where four and a half ain't a good deal.
Well, no, it's, it's been, it's been a bad deal. Two was a good deal. Now four and a half. Yeah. But, but the point is, is that they have the resources. Over the, over the remaining life, they'll pay, you know, I mean, you could argue that four and a half, if you needed more money later, we could keep this and, but I think this is a sound policy. Melina and Glenn, do you have anything to add?
No, but I am ready to make a motion.
Please do.
Um, I, let's say I move approval of, um, excuse me, I move approval of the presentation to call the bond, um, for, prepay the bond as has been discussed and in, in the packet, the twenty eleven transit room tax revenue bonds.
So second, it's been moved by Melina and seconded by Doug that we approve the calling of the two thousand eleven transient room tax revenue bonds. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion's unanimous.
I'd like to thank Ms. Wesselhoff for her wisdom and sharp.
So.
I second that.
Yeah, amen. So, uh, we do have a, a minute or two left. Stephanie, I, I do think I'd like to have us deal with your twenty twenty-two stipulations. If I could get a motion and a second to convenance the Board of Equalization. It's been moved and seconded by Roger and Doug that we convene as the Summit County Board of Equalization. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? So Stephanie, there were lots of changes from secondary to primary, uh. No, you've got to push that button.
There we go. Great. Okay. So you're going to see a lot of changes the first couple of weeks between primary and secondary. There's a period of time from when we close the roll and the end of May until January, or excuse me, July second, when that hundred and eighty-three day consecutive day requirement, uh, comes into play. And so what we do is we set these aside and then as soon as the Board of Equalization opens up, we process.
So you've been accumulating these.
Since the end of May.
Uh huh. And is it, uh, can you briefly describe the process you go through for vetting uh, uh, an affidavit for an application for primary exemption?
I can. So in the state of Utah, if your home is your primary residence and you live in that home, a hundred and eighty-three consecutive days of the year, you qualify for a forty-five percent exemption. Uh, our county, along with four other counties in the state of Utah, were primarily secondary homes. So unlike most counties that just presume a primary exemption, our county, you're required to prove residency here and domicile here in the state or Summit County. So we have an application process. We require, um, different forms of proof of residency from your driver's license uh, to your lease agreements and having your leases match, driver's license match the address that they're at. Um, we've looked at income tax reports. Of course, we redact important information out of those. Uh, there's a number of ways that we determine domicile.
Okay. Uh, does the council have any questions for Stephanie on this batch of stipulations? Okay.
Um, it's just one of the, see, to change land code to affect primary use of land.
Well, you have both, both your improvement value and your land value are broken out per state code. And within that particular one, we had the home code as primary, but the land code was not.
It's not, it's not the county ordinances.
It was just a miscode. Yeah. Yeah. So it just needed to be corrected.
And what is a fee appraisal, just value to, uh, adjust value to affect fee appraisal?
Well, I, I guess that's a terminology that we use. So if an individual has their home refinanced and they have an appraisal done for that, or they're purchasing and have an appraisal done for the purchase price, we refer to that as a fee appraisal.
A fee appraisal would be when someone hires an appraiser, pays them up, and submits the appraisal as evidence of, of a differing in opinion as to value.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions on this batch of stipulation?
I move approval of the stipulations as presumed.
It's been moved and seconded respectively by Roger and Doug that we approve the stipulations as presented in the packet. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion's unanimous.
I'm happy we dismissed as the Board of Equalization that reconvenes camp council.
It's been, been seconded by Roger and Doug that we reconvene as the county council and dismiss as the Board of Equalization. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. So now, um, I actually think other than county com- council comments and manager comments that, that were caught up, we'll do those after. So we want to welcome those of you in the audience that have joined us today. We have received, uh, a lot of, uh, court, not a lot, but a significant amount of correspondence concern over the tax notices that you've received. That we, we, as, as citizens and taxpayers have also received on our respective properties. And rather than try to deal with those in a piecemeal fashion, we were hopeful of having as we have present with us today, those, uh, uh, among our elected colleagues who are responsible for this process. You noted a few minutes ago that we convened as the Board of Equalization for the county, which is where our, ultimately our, our Board of Equalization is what hears appeals and protests. Now we've delegated some of that and you saw that the staff had, had prepared a list of stipulations that, uh, we then, we then ratified that were mainly adjustments from secondary to primary. And, but as was pointed out, there was a fee appraisal that resulted in a change in assessed value. So the council's role is, is to serve as a board of equalization, but we have with us here, uh, Stephanie Paul, who is the county, elected county assessor. We have Corey Forsling, who is the elected county treasurer. And we were going to get online, who is traveling back from Hawaii, Michael Howard, who is the auditor. And these three elected officials are the ones that administer the ad valorem tax processes for the county a- as provided in state code. And they have put together this property tax briefing, which we'd like them first to go through. So you now have the floor and then, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll see where things go from there. If you read the agenda, we said there may be public comment taken. Uh, and there's a big crowd here and I'm not sure. I hope after this presentation, you'll understand the process and that the public comment to us as the council is best given if, if, if these results are not liked in the form of an appeal that then goes to the Board of Equalization because this body that is con- has convened this meeting is not the body that sets the assessed values. We, we, we approve the certified tax rate, which is based on the assessed values, but that's a perfunctory thing. So I'd like to turn it over. I don't know who wants to lead, Stephanie or Corey. Please introduce yourself and tell us what your function is in this process and lead us with the presentation.
All right. I am not liking putting my back to the audience. So I'm just going to say hello. I'm Corey Forsling. I'm the county treasurer. It's nice to meet you. I have spoken with, um, probably a few of you on the phone. I've been chatting with everyone for the past couple of weeks, as has everyone involved in the property tax process for the county. And so I wish I knew names as well, but I'm glad that you're here to understand the process. Um, I'm going to take a few slides just to actually explain it. Um, my role really comes at the end and the valuations, I think, are the reason that everyone is here. So Steph is going to tackle those. And we do have a series of questions that we've been hearing most frequently. So hopefully we'll be able to address those. And then if you still have questions at the end, it's up to the council about the comment process. So here we go now, back of my head. Okay. Oh, thank you. So we're just going to look at the cycle, the property tax cycle that we go through every year. Um, how the tax rates are calculated, how to read your valuation notice that you've received and many of you have with you. Um, how to understand the process of how the market value was assessed, how to appeal it if you don't agree with it. And then, as I mentioned, answers to those FAQs that we've been receiving. So just to start off, this is an annual process. It happens every year. The recorder throughout the year is establishing the tax base. Can you hit it for me?
Oh.
Yeah. That's what I'm talking about. Right.
Did you want to leave that slide already?
There we go. I have animations. Aren't they cute? But, okay. So we, she establishes the tax base every year, basically the legal descriptions of every property. And on January first of every year, there's a snapshot that's taken. And that, that tax base is valued as of January first, the condition of every property by the assessor. The assessor values the tax base in the spring, completing it in May. She closes that tax roll and Steph's going to talk more about this in May. Uh, and then in July, the auditor is involved in calculating the tax. He does that using the values established by the assessor and then pulling in the budgets from all of the taxing authorities. And then pulling in the budgets from all of the taxing authorities uh within the county. And this is again how every county process handles this throughout the state. After the auditor calculates the tax, uh, he sends out that valuation notice that you have in your hands. And then there is roughly six to eight weeks, there are forty-five days from the day it's mailed, thank you. Um, to so, to submit an appeal by September fifteenth. Um, that appeal goes to the. The uh Board of Equalization and that process is to adjust the tax base. And once it's finalized, my office mails out the tax bills in October. Taxes are due November thirtieth.
Could, could I interrupt just?
Absolutely.
Second. I want to mention that lean date, it's the, the lean date of January one. So if, for instance. You were building a house and on January first, the house just had footing and foundation. And, and then. That's all it was, then that's, or it was even vacant land and you started the house on January second. It'd be valued as vacant land. So I, I see some instances where someone said, well, my taxes went way up from last year. On the lean due date, say January one of twenty twenty-one, it might have been. Somewhere in the course of construction, but not finished. And then Ju- January one, twenty twenty-two, it's completed. And so there might be a big jump due to that. Uh, the second thing I wanted to point out is our role is at that BOE level. And we have a, we delegate to a bunch of hearing officers who ho- who handle those appeal hearings. And then make a recommendation to us, which comes in the form of stipulation. Those of you that were here earlier saw how we dealt with the stipulations. In some. Instances, we actually hear the hearings, but it's rare. We don't want to hear thousands of them. So we have hearing officers do that. Sorry for the interruption.
I would, I meant to actually preface the whole thing by saying that this process is mandated by the state. Every county in this, in the state goes through this process. All of these terms are all statewide terms that you find at every county level. So we don't have any authority to, to change this process in any way.
Corey, let me mention one other thing. If you could go back to that slide. So. This, the, the third phase is that calculate the tax at the auditor. So. In this state, in order to raise the tax rate. You have to go through truth and taxation. But what happens is. In the big picture, the county or the taxing entities, not counting new growth. Are supposed to get the same revenue they got in the prior year. So if the value goes up, the tax rate has to go down. And on average. Now, the, the problem with averages is there's some high and some low, but on average. The, the, the revenue we get other than from new growth is the same. The taxing entities are the same. So when the, when I said that it was a perfunctory thing for the county council. To adopt the certified tax rate as delivered to us by the auditor. It's the auditor's analysis of the values given in, in the second circle. And saying, in order for you to achieve the same revenue, this is what the rate would be. And the rate actually goes down. So in a year like this, when the assessed values go up, the rate goes down. And that's the certified rate. Maybe you were going to explain that.
I was indeed.
All right.
It's all good. All right. So the tax rate system is to create level revenue to every taxing authority. Um, there are, if you look at your valuation notice, you'll probably see about fifteen taxing entities on there and they each go through this process independently. Uh, for any taxing authority, there's a total market valuation that Steph's office would arrive at by May. The total of those market values, if they increase, the tax rate subsequently decreases to compensate. The same is true if the opposite happens. Total market values decrease, the tax rates increase to compensate. In that way, the budget is leveled to the taxing authority from year to year. If he hits space bar again. Yep. Keep on going. Right. There, so the, the property tax revenue to any authority is going to be literally the same, close to the penny every year. With some exceptions. One is new growth. That calculation always compensates for any new growth, new construction in the area. Um, the second is that truth and taxation process that Chris mentioned. If um a taxing entity wants to increase their. Tax revenue, they need to go through this public process with hearings. And then the third is a, a bond, a voter-approved bond or levy. Last year, um Summit County voters approved overwhelmingly the open space bond. So if you look at the Summit County General Fund, it did increase by enough to cover the bond payment this year. So those are the exceptions to that property tax revenue. Okay. Now let's take a quick look at your valuation notice.
Can you zoom that in? For those in the audience.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, there's a, she'll get to it.
On the upper left section there, that in the property type, when you get this in the mail, we want you to check two things. Uh, one is the primary, I'm sorry, the property type. Is it primary or non-primary? If it says, and you can jump in anytime, I'm sorry, I'm a talker. Um, if it says that uh your property is primary, you do live there, then you're okay. If this is your primary residence and it does not indicate that it's primary, then you can apply to get that primary residence exemption.
And, and by the same token, if you are a non-primary resident and you've come in and it's primary, you are required by law to. Inform the assessor's office that you're a non-primary.
And by the way, it's not uncommon for the county council as the Board of Equalization to get appeals from folks. Whose properties have been, have changed for whatever reason. They've lived here, we've had cases where people have lived here for years and had primary exemptions. And for reasons that I don't recall. It fell off and their tax notice said that they were secondary. And that secondary is going to, is going to require a much higher tax payment. So make sure that you look at this the day, the day I get my tax notice, the first thing I look at is that primary. To make sure it's primary, because if you're a primary resident in Utah, I believe you get an approximate forty-five percent discount. On the valuation of your property. So if you miss that, you're going to pay taxes on a hundred percent of the valuation. And if you miss the deadline. If this, everything closes in September and you've missed the deadline to tell. Assessor's office that they've made a mistake and mischaracterized. It's hard to, it's hard to overcome that. You're stuck with it for a year. Check that first.
I'll just add on the, on the primary, we're lucky because the deadline is all the way to November thirtieth. So if you get your tax bill, sometimes a lot of people don't even realize it until their tax bill comes, like they actually have to pay. Um, in that case, we still can adjust your primary residence exemption.
That's correct. But I did want to just clarify, in Summit County, we do have an ordinance that does require office to periodically audit. And because the, the fluidy, fluidity of our residential, we're about fifty-five percent secondary right now. We do run audits and so we do send out a notification there. You'll get a disclosure notice that tells you in your tax bill. So you have up to three notices. To say that you've been under an audit review. And those audit reviews would be that we don't have a current application on file or proof of residency. So um if you'll just respond to those notices, it's, it's very easy to put, put that. Uh, exemption back on. And you do have until November thirtieth, as Corey pointed out.
Other item that we want you to check on this valuation notice is the market value. And I'm sure that's why many folks are here today. Uh, there is a process to appeal if you feel like you can't sell your property for that value. And that uh Steph will go into more detail on that, but the um date is by September fifteenth. Okay. Looking um in more detail at the valuation notice. Um, on the left-hand side, you'll see, this is in the North Summit School just district, this property is. And uh this particular parcel has maybe twelve different taxing entities that are on the list. Like I said before, all of these are independent. There are a couple where the, the county council. Um, approves the tax rate, but otherwise they're all independent. They have independent budgets and their tax rates are set independently based on the market value and their budget. They decide independently whether or not um to go through that tooth and truth and taxation process. Um, this tax uh valuation notice, you see that Weber Basin Water is the only authority going through that process. And so you see their public meeting listed there on the right-hand side. Um, down at the bottom, yes.
Stephanie, I mean, uh, Corey. The others in that changes column that have increases like the multi-county ANC or the. State basic school levy, can you explain how, how those are raised without truth and tra- taxation?
So the state basic school levy, I always like to pull that one out. It's well worth mentioning. This year. They have, if the values had stayed the same, their tax rate would have been point zero zero fourteen oh one. So you can see that in the second column. Will you see the taxing entity, the taxes, and then the rate? If the values were the same, the rate would have been fourteen oh one. Um. However, uh, uh, the state legislature made the choice to increase the rate to point zero zero sixteen fifty-two. And they are freezing that rate for five years. Uh, this is to fund, um, they're more knowledgeable about this than me, probably you guys are. Um, but this is to.
Last year. I believe this is the last year on that five-year freeze.
Oh, you think so?
I, I believe so.
Could you speak up when you speak, Stephanie, please?
Yes, I, if we're talking about the rate that froze, I believe this is the last year of that five-year freeze. So what they do in legislation next year, if they continue, continue that, that would be up to them.
But that's why it looks like an increase, because it would have been at the fourteen oh one, but it's frozen to sixteen fifty-two. Um. I answered your question.
And then this, then the multi-county assessing and collecting.
That is also controlled by the state legislature.
So, so on both of those, well, really on all three of those increases, tho- those are not controlled by the county.
No, they're not.
Could, could you, if you're not going to say it elsewhere, tell us collectively when you, like in this particular case. The difference between last year's rate and this year's rate, and maybe you can see it there in those lower numbers. So what, what are you, what, uh, the, the tax rate, it looks like it was a double, a triple zero, five, two, two, six. And then it's now triple zero. I can't read that.
Yeah. It, I'm sorry.
So, so it, it didn't go down. But there's other things in it that went up that are outside of, uh, uh, of the control. We, we said earlier, assessed value up, rate down.
I'm not, I, I'm sorry, I can't see exactly which authority you're referring to.
Well, I'm taking it, looking at the total rate.
Oh, the total rate, right.
From five, two, two, six to five, six, four, six.
That's dou- double up. Yep. Okay. So it, so the, the rate due to, due to those factors, you see there actually went up.
It would have, if the market value, if there was no authority going through a truth and taxation, or the state legislature had not increased those two rates. Then it would have decreased.
I understand. I'm just pointing, I'm pointing it out that due to those things have increased.
Right. So in this particular case, maybe this was a bad vote to choose. Um, I have a list of all the rates and the vast majority of the tax areas have dropped. Some would have dropped further if there weren't authorities that are going through truth and taxation.
So in July, and maybe we can put this up on. In July, we reduced tax rates, I think on every. Except maybe for the open space bond, we lowered the tax rate, I think, on every line item.
Yes.
For the county. It would be nice to show the public what happened there so that they can see what the county tax rate did. Independent of each of these individual other raises.
Let me clarify what you said, Roger. We approved certified rates. Presented by the auditor based on the assessed values that were less than last year's. It's not like we had discretion to, to approve the rates. I'm going to, you know.
Overall valuation went up.
Right. So and the certified rates went down.
Auditor had to do this calculation based on a level of revenue we were supposed to get based on that increase value. Would have meant that that rate had to be lowered to make that revenue equal. So we approved in July a reduction in the tax rate for Summit County uh on all of those matters.
It, the overall rate for Summit County general in twenty twenty-one was triple out six, seven, five. In twenty twenty-two, it is triple out six, one, nine. So the re- the rate did decrease. Despite the increase in revenue taken for the open space bond.
Right. Keep going. Sorry to keep interrupting.
No, I'm, I'm glad to have the questions. Let's move forward.
Steph.
Now I'll take over. I'm just going to turn for a second and introduce myself as well. I'm Stephanie Paul, the Summit County Assessor. So I've either spoke to you on the phone, emailed you, but more than likely you would have talked to one of our staff appraisers. That appraises in your general area rather than speaking to me um personally. And I'm just going to start. Um, I stewed a little bit this afternoon on where I would start, realizing that my responses. Due to the nature of our job and just the statutory requirements of our office, they do seem like canned responses, which has been some of our feedback. I also realize a, a lot of you have, because of your effort you've put into understanding the process last couple of weeks. It may seem like maybe I'm rehatching uh the same old response. But I would like to start with the basics for some of you that maybe haven't heard this bill. Or maybe somewhat still unclear on the process. So. The assessor's office is tasked with identifying market values for all residential, vacant and improved, commercial, vacant and improved. Properties as well as personal property tax. The state tax commission requires the counties, this again is statewide, do a five-year detailed review cycle. Our office is staffed with seven appraisers and more than forty-three thousand parcels. And the method of mass appraisal applies a pretty broad. Brush stroke. Each of the appraisers is in a work, is over an area. For example, we have a North Summit, South Summit, the Park City proper. We have two areas of Snyderville Basin. We have condos and commercial. So in addition, so each year that appraiser will take just twenty percent of their area. So that as a whole, we're reappraising or doing a detailed review of twenty percent of the county each year. But in addition to that, we're required to be within five percent of the market analysis that's completed every January, February time. We're required to factor property values outside of a deep roll, detail review if the sales in that particular neighborhood warranted. The program that we use is actually from the state tax commission called Racial Link. That is populated with sales primarily off of the Wasatch Front MLS, but also the cell surveys from the state tax commission themselves. Um, with ownership changes, they actually send out uh. Um, surveys to get uh cell information back. So we rely on those as well. We have Park City MLS that our office works with, but we, we use those cells in our data analysis. A lot of them are double kit from the Wasatch Front. If we have any new ones, we keep those um pretty tight. We do not share those with the state tax commission. Um. It's something that needs to be addressed also so that you realize this is not something that our office can. Look away from or ignore on that sales ratio through the racial link program. If we're not addressing those cells, our state representative knows that and they can mandate a factor for us. So it cannot be ignored. So in essence, all properties are being assessed each year, but that does not always equate to a value increase or decrease. If there are no cells to check, to back or defend an increase or a decrease. For example, if you were in a detailed review recently and you had a substantial increase, or there were sales in your area and you had a sub- set substantial increase the year prior. And then this year where there were really no sales to factor. There is possibility that you had no value increase. And with the rising overall market values, the tax rate drops, there is a chance that those properties could realize a, a decrease in taxes as that rate falls. I'm not sure if any of you last year reappraised your properties with the interest rates. You're wishing you had maybe reappraised now that we're at six percent interest, but. When you do that, you, what we refer to as a fee appraiser, it's a certified or licensed residential appraiser with the division of real estate. As all of our appraisers are in our office. But the process they do is an individual fee work as opposed to mass appraisal. But their appraisal method is different. Um, for one, they're invited to your home, which is a huge difference from our staff appraisers. Often when we show up uh to the property, we're told um where we can go everywhere but the property. So there is a little bit of a difference there. You're also, when you, you've hired an appraiser, either that or your uh financial institution for your refinances. Hired an appraiser, you invite them into your home to see the work that you've done. Most often the mass appraisal, we are not privy to that information. If they've done. If they've done what they should and they've taken out a building permit for remodels, upgrades, basement finishes, et cetera, we do get those. Um, but otherwise we, we're not privy to a lot of that information. Um, the state gives us January first as our lead date. And because this accounting lesson essence, as we mentioned earlier, take, kind of take a snapshot of that date and time. So we're always using values from the year before. So everything that you've been valued for twenty twenty two has been used with twenty twenty one sales. But much like your appraisal that you may have got for refinance last year, in this increasing market, that appraiser signs and dates that appraisal and three months later, it's undervalued. The market has increased steadily every quarter for two years now, including twenty twenty two going into the third quarter. We see that listings have dropped significantly, sales have dropped significantly, but sales prices continue to climb even into the third quarter.
Please, you, please respect the assessor and let her finish your presentation.
But those numbers are taken from the Park City MLS reports, so. So a lot of field calls that we have filled, builded, build, taken, both myself and in Cory's office, when we ask you to consider is, we realize that the big increase that is at market value, we realize a lot of people understand that the, the value that they have on their property is at market value. So then we come back to two, uh, questions that kind of come into play. And that is equity and the rate of increase. So in the state of Utah, I don't know if we can go to the next slide, that might have it. In the state of Utah, there is no statutory requirement that caps the rate of increase. We're a market value driven state and we're required to be at market. So there's, yeah, I know that there's some states and we hear this from a lot of our residents because they're secondary homeowners and they're coming from other states. There are caps and limits on the amount a property can increase each year, but the state of Utah does not have that.
It's actually Article thirteen in the state constitution that every property has to be assessed in proportion to its fair market value, regardless of whether you own it or you intend to sell it, it's all fair market value.
That's correct. So one of the equity issues that was raised, and it actually just come across my desk this afternoon, later this afternoon. And I'm, I'm going to address it for just a moment because we realized when we hit go and, and send that tax rule to the auditor, that Old Ranch Road was going to see significant increases, a hundred percent plus increases in their area. And so some of the question is, well, gosh, look at Ranch Place, Will Creek, Snyder Mill areas, they're only seeing maybe thirty, sixty percent at most. So it's not easy, it always pinpointed, there's so many variables in play. But when we have homogeneous areas like Ranch Place, Will Creek, Snyder'sville, there's always a good number of cells available to us. And because it's even within Ranch Place, we only had two cells and Snyder's Mill, maybe we only had one. Because they're so homogeneous, we can use those cells and we can spread that sales ratio study out amongst those. So because those properties, those types of properties sell more often than do properties along Old Ranch Road, those values have been coming up in smaller amounts. So we haven't had a lot of sales on Old Ranch Road from twenty to twenty one, wrap those numbers. The only indication that we could find in lot values from eight hundred to a million and in a drastic, and we had zero, um, change in our factor to the improvements. But from twenty one to twenty two with the cells that we were given, we have a one million to two million lot factor change, and this part is huge. From our factors on our, uh, improvements from four hundred to twelve hundred. That brings me shamelessly going to plug from my budget, but uh, when we do fat mass factors and we're applying a factor to an area, it doesn't always apply equally if the homes are not homogeneous. So we have, um, a need for the Marshall and Swift cost estimator. Since Summit County went on to the Tyler Camma, Camma system in two thousand and seven.
What's it called?
The Tyler Camma system, it's where we cost out the home to get the initial value to apply to ourselves racial study. Those costs have not been updated since two thousand and seven. What happens then is we're then relying, when we're trying to bring everything into market, we're relying on factoring the improvement. Well, if all the homes are similar in age and size, style, those factors work. But if we have a home in a, in an area that's unlike its neighbors and it has excessive square foot, we're applying that same factor because it's, it's mass appraisal. And that may, in that particular home may take a higher hit, but that is what the board of vehicleization process is for, is to catch those anomalies that, you know, are high and low. And of course, we never hear from the anomalies that are low. We only hear from those that are high. But we did have that approved in our twenty twenty budget. But as you know, COVID hit there in mid-spring and we were asked, the council prudently asked us to cut back in preparation for, we, we just weren't sure what COVID would do to our budget, so. Uh, and again, in twenty one, we were asked to be conservative. So for twenty twenty two, I will be asking for that Marshall Swift cost estimator in our tighter program to bring those needed costs up. In doing so, all of these large factors will come back down and the individual homes will be starting out costing at their particular square foot quality and all of their little attributes that add to value. And it'll be done with better costs. So it seems, you know, maybe at first inequitable um, with the percentage difference increases, that all properties are treated equally. Each go through a detailed review and all properties are increased due to the market influences or the sales. Another thing that would be helpful in our office, and this will be a second year ask for us, is for a data analyst. Because it's, it's easy to come to market when you have sales. But what we need is to be able to take those cells and extract them, have help with some statistical modeling so that we can apply that same method or that same increase in value to other light type properties. Um, I use this example for like South Summit, we have a good amount of sales in the South Summit area, not so much in North Summit. But they're very similar market areas. And so it'd be nice to be able to bring those increases at the same time. We do and have used, um, Nick, I, his last name just left me, with the state of Utah. He is a GIS specialist and he has been helping a lot of the counties to do just this. The problem is, is he's one guy and he's the state tax commission employee trying to help however many counties. The larger counties, Weber, Davis, Utah, Salt Lake, they all have modeling, um, in place. We're actually working with Utah County as far as our job description and their layout of modeling and statistical modeling that we're going to try and follow. What Nick has provided for us, we've extracted over five years of tax rule information to him. We've just got that back yesterday. It's too, too much information right now to scrub, to present. But it has proven to show two areas of concern that we were already aware of. But now we have data to analyze and to sort through, and that would be our commercial base as well as the Weber Canyon area. Um, so I hope that that answers that question on why we're asking for addition, an, an additional position for a data analyst. We've also found, when you're talking about, um, inequities, we have found an error that was brought to our attention by a diligent taxpayer questioning equitability. So my predecessor, there was a different train of thought. And this happened last year and he was upset about his value. And he said, well, I have four neighbors and look at their values, they're low. What happened was they lowered his value and then the next year raised it back up and then corrected the four. What should have happened is we should have said, as we're going to say to this, another gentleman this year, thank you for your information, it's not an equitability issue, it's an error issue. Your home is at market value. These homes happen to have had a standby value placed on them. They've gone through all of the same detail reviews, had effective ages changed, uh, factors changed. But that standby value inside the temp, the Camma system overrides all of that. What should have happened is those standby values removed and, and brought up. And we have a similar situation this year. Um, he had talked to us about some, what he figured was inequalities in his values. And we did address those, uh, coming up because that, his neighboring area was coming through a detailed review. And I could not figure out, we've already addressed that. So this, this afternoon, literally I'm out on the GIS and I'm clicking through every one, trying to figure out why is he still so upset? Well, he didn't want to point out his neighbor. So he, he didn't, wasn't too direct with us. Well, right on his road, twelve lot subdivision, error in the code and it has missed the factor. But I'm not going to lower his value. I'm going to correct the error in those twelve codes and they will, you'll see those next week when we bring those before the board of equalization. We're going to correct the value that was incorrect. So we appreciate, um, I mean, don't, I know you don't want to point out your neighbors, but if you feel that there is inequitability in your neighboring properties, talk to the appraiser and we can, we can take a look at it. Because we, in these two scenarios, we did have mistakes or errors within our coding that by that, just by that error in the coding, it misses the mass factor update as we update forty-three thousand parcels at a time. So it's.
Stephanie, if those under-valued problems were all brought up to market value, what would it do to everybody's taxes when they go up, when they go down, what would happen?
Well, this, just these twelve lots will be about a thirty-one dollar, thirty-one million dollar value increase for this tax area.
So that will push down the tax rate even further.
Yes.
Thirty-one on our tax, thirty-one million on our tax base is not going to be noticeable.
That's just.
I know, but I, I think that I'd like you to finish and then I'd like to say a few things and then you, you have more to say here.
Well, I was just going to talk about how to appeal and the kind of information because when we talk to them, i- if you have an inequitability issue, you're going to have a home that's the same size, perhaps you're overbuilt for your area, maybe your husband put in a big man cave garage with a sports court, but nobody else in your neighbor has that. And so when we apply these mass factor updates to the improvements, it may overshoot the runway. Things like that is an inequitability issue, something that we're not addressing. We're, we're applying a factor to you that should not be applied to you. So when you, when you apply for the board of equalization and we talk about the documentation, for an example, a CMA from a realtor. Can I turn and talk this way? I feel like I'm, I'm trying to talk to them, but. So when you go to a realtor and you ask for a CMA, we had a gentleman.
Tell us what a CMA is.
I don't know what it stands for. Do we have a realtor in the house? I always just call it a CMA.
Analysis of the market, yeah.
Okay. So very similar to, uh, it's a quick and dirty appraisal, kind of is what we call it. But, um, you just need to make sure that you're talking the same talk. So this gentleman says, well, I have a three thousand square foot home. And a lot of us, we consider the main floor above grade square foot of our home to be the square foot. He didn't mention that he had a twenty-three hundred square foot finished basement. But a realtor, when he hears three thousand square foot, they consider total square foot. So he pulled a bunch of three thousand square foot homes, but that's not the same home. Um, his home was also stood, stood built, had a nice detached garage by acres with river frontage. And because the focus, the blinders were on, I need my taxes lowered, I need my value lowered. This, what was submitted was a modular home, home on small lots, when I'm addressing, uh, a difference of lot value or addressing the detached garage. So I realize your overall hope is that your market value is not right and it's going to go down. But as you do that, realize that what you submit for your evidence has to be a good comp. It has to be a comp that it's like your home, same age, style, square foot, finished basement, do you have a large detached garage? The, all these things have to be considered. And so you have to give your, we've had a few calls from realtors too. And we've kind of gone through this whole talk and they're, oh, I can't help them. Well, they can't help you because a good portion of you are at market value. So, um, and if you submit a recent appraisal, that appraisal, the comp, comps that are used have to be from twenty twenty one. And that is upheld by an ALJ or your state tax commissioners, um, because of the lead date. All, so everybody's being, um, graded against the same sales, you have to use twenty, twenty-one sales. Or your closing docs, that's always a good indication of value, what you paid for it, so.
And, and those closing docs have to be recent. If I bought my home ten years ago, I bring them in, that's not going to work.
That's not going to work, no.
How, how recent do they have to be?
Uh, well, twenty twenty one, we'll look at a twenty twenty-two sale if it's something that's just purchased. But generally we're running off of twenty twenty one is what we're looking for.
Do you have anything more to say?
We.
Cory.
Um, we have a series of questions that in speaking with people over the last few weeks that we have encountered that are common. Um, so we can go through these or if you wanted to ask questions.
No, I think you go through these.
I believe I've answered the, the first two, or at least I hope I have, um. I, I can tackle number two because I, this is the one I've heard fairly frequently. Um, is the county getting a huge windfall in tax revenues? And hopefully we addressed that earlier in the presentation where the market values go up and the rates go down. Um, so no, there is no change. Um, there's a, I can tell you the exact numbers, but, um, there's the county revenue, the additional amount for new growth, which is about six hundred thousand, there's four point one million for the open space bond. And then that equals the new amount of revenue, so, um.
When you say the county, you're oversimplifying.
I am talking to Summit County General Fund.
There's a general fund.
The general fund only.
Assessing and collecting. And then, and then on that list, that tax notice had twelve taxing entities. The county proper is three of those, right? The assessing and collecting.
Local assessing and collecting.
Locals, not the multi-county.
Right.
Local assessing and collecting, municipal, if you're, if you're not in a, if you're in the unincorporated part of the county.
Mm-hmm.
And the general fund. The rest of those entities, the school district, mosquito abatement, Weber Basin.
Recreations, cemeteries, fire districts.
Stuff is not, not, not the body we.
Right, but the philosophy is the same. The fire district also does not have any additional revenue.
Right.
Because their rates dropped to compensate. So just to confirm that question again.
Go to the next one.
Should we open it?
No, I want you to go through all of these.
So why is the value of our home changed so much just because there are sales in the area? I don't have any intention of selling.
I, just that we are mandated by state law to have all homes at market value. And so it, it is hard. I, in twenty twenty, I sat across the counter with a wo- woman who was born and raised in an old town, a home on, in an old town, literally being taxed out of her home. I, I have compassion for the fact that people, you know, that it, they're being hit hard with this and there's, there's gas increases, food and price increases. But I have to be at market value. So if you're looking at your tax notice and you are at market value, while I have compassion for the fact that you don't have any intent of selling, there's nothing that I can do from the assessment office standpoint, there's nothing I can do.
Uh, why did some properties and areas go up by a lot and others stayed relatively the same? Um, I know, I think you talked about this, but how do you decide which properties to reassess?
Well, each appraiser, uh, has that five-year cycle within his or her area and they take twenty percent of that to reappraise each year.
How many appraisers do you have, Steph?
We have seven appraisers.
And are they each assigned to a different part of the county?
They are, we have Skylar, uh, Jenkins does our South Summit area. We have Courtney Simmons, who's an appraiser trainee, new, very new, first year. She's doing North Summit. We have Kirsten Richens, who's taking over the condos, also a brand new trainee going through the classes and the, and the process. And as, as I say this, we've hired these within the last year. And we try to hire appraisers who are already certified residential appraisers. But, um, we work for the county, so I, I don't know if you know, an appraiser can make upward of three to four hundred thousand a year. So we can entice them to come work for the county. So we generally are, are training our appraisers and we do send them through the same courses and, um, training that you, a fee appraiser would get through the division of real estate. But we have three of those, um, that are early on in their training. Kirsten Richens, one of them over at the condos. Kenny Jacobson does our commercial. We have Mindy Duncan, Matt Holm, uh, doing Snyderville Basin and Travis Lewis and Park City proper. We have Mindy Duncan, Matt Holm, uh, doing Snyderville Basin and Travis Lewis in Park City proper.
Okay, so.
I was just gonna add one more thing at the end about I've owned my home for over twenty years and I can't afford this, what can I do? And this is my little plug for the new program that was passed by the state legislature. Um, and is effective this year. It's in May, so counties don't have to do it, but I'm willing to do it if the, if the council is game, we can defer. Um, we can defer property taxes if your market value is under eight hundred and ten thousand or you've owned the property for twenty years. You need to be seventy-five years old um, and have income under seventy-one thousand. But that income limit is significantly higher than our, than our other abatement programs, so it's. Um, it's an option for people who have been in their home for a long time, um, if you meet those qualifications.
So.
You have to be seventy-five years old. The income is, so there are four elements, age seventy-five. Market value this year is either eight hundred and ten thousand, or you've owned the property for twenty years, that's neither or. Income limit this year is seventy-one thousand. It's actually your twenty-twenty-one income, seventy-one thousand, and the fourth one is liquid resources. Do you have cash, checking or savings, stocks or bonds? Cannot be in excess of twenty times your twenty-twenty-one tax amount. So take you whenever your twenty-twenty-one taxes were, times twenty, when you can't have liquid resources.
Corey.
Yes.
I, I'm not very good at listening, but I thought you said that was a deferral.
It is a deferral program.
So it's not like it's forgiven, it's just the payment due date is delayed.
Until you pass away or until you sell the property.
Okay, so it, without interest or penalty?
With this year, um, the interest rate is uh, three and a half percent.
So, so what, what you're saying is if some, if, if. If you elected to do it as, if you chose to do it as our treasurer and you said it would require, I guess, our support, is there a resolution we need to pass or something?
Requires, no.
Okay, so if you were to do that, it's not a free lunch. It's got some, a high bar of different standards, and then you still have to pay interest.
This is a new. These legislation passed, I think this last, last.
S, SB twenty-five, correct.
Yeah, so I'm gonna summarize something that I heard, and that's a few things I heard. Forty-two thousand parcels. Seven appraisers. Rocket science, scientists or not, that's, that math is, is a lot of parcels per appraiser. A requirement to do twenty percent. In each of those areas, so every five years, there should be a detailed look at every property. But nonetheless, every year you have to be within nine.
Percent.
Within five percent of.
Markets.
A market, okay, so. Then you've got a system that, that the state uses, you said CAMIS.
Ratio Inc. is the program that they use for this.
Ratio Inc., so you've, you have a black box and you, a computer, and you put things in and it applies some ratios and some factors. You said that. You ask, you, you haven't been able to update costs. Uh, per square foot for improvements since two thousand and seven?
That's correct.
Had they been updated, I suppose the result would have been higher than they are now, but reg, but regardless. What I'm trying, the point I'm trying to make is this is a very shotgun approach. At best, because there's no way, forty-two thousand parcels, you can't go into a structure. That, yeah, I mean, you, you can, but not likely, you're doing it broad stroke, covering a lot of ground.
That's correct.
Which is what all the counties do, and most of the time, it's not. A, a big deal like it is this year. By the way, my, my tax, my value went up two hundred percent and my taxes went up two hundred and sixty percent, you know, vice versa. Anyway, so it's not like this is uh, uh, you know, hypothetical issue for me either. But what I'm trying to point out is. I think, and, and we could, we could let, we could stay here all night and hear from every one of you how bad this is. And the, and my opinion is that the reality is that these two women and the auditor who's not here. Have followed the process, that there isn't anything we can do, there's something you can do. And that is those three things, the CWA, whatever that certified.
CMA.
CMA. That goes, that you go to a, a realtor and comparing apples to apples. Comes in and says, your home is worth this based on my professional experience. And you file by the fifteenth of September without fail. You go online and get the form, or you have a fee appraisal done. Or if you were lucky enough to have bought your home in the last year and a half, let's say, you bring in your closing statement. You do one of those three things and you appeal the value, that's a specific thing. These people have valued forty-two thousand parcels.
Right, there, there are often, many times our appraisers, we would um, care for a fee appraisal. It'd be nice to say we can hone in on your property and with the sales that we have had. We have not just four or five comps, we have ten comps and you can nail down that, that value. But in this appraisal, you are going to have some outliers, so that is the, the process for Board of Equalization. So don't um, feel like you can't, I mean, look at your value. And if you do feel like it is overstated, by all means, contact our office. And just, those are the three best ways, but I do have to be honest in telling you that the State Tax Commission and ALJ is very lenient towards the taxpayer, so. If you don't know a realtor or you're not comfortable asking, you can kind of do your own, we have, we do not like Zillow, but. We do have them submit um, from Zillow, but you just, again, you have to make sure that you're comparing the same type of home, your square foot, all of those. Amenities that add value to your property, make sure that the comps you're bringing have those same attributes. I just wanted to quickly add too, as Corey's mentioned, this um, piece of legislation that just passed. That was um, in part, one of our residents in Silver Creek who had his value doubled. And we referred him because he's on a fixed income. And it was a huge hit for him and, and we do have compassion for that, so we, we referred him to Corey's office, who helps with the individual programs and the different. Programs that we have for tax abatement. And he was this much, you know, made this much too much to qualify for that. So we asked him if he would like to. Work with the Taxpayers Association that helped with this legislation that passed, so sometimes when our hands are tied, um. Don't think that you can't reach out to your legislators. Our assessors affiliate group has actually reached out to this uh. To legislation to say, look, these values are increasing dramatically and people are gonna have a hard time, especially our house tops, the residential properties. What can we do? I mean, maybe we need to take a different look at, at our primary residential exemption, it's been at forty-five percent for a number of years, does it need to be increased? So um, it's, there's not, our hands are tied a little bit by state statute, but our legislators. Maybe we need to voice, you know, some changes there like we did with um, our gentleman in Silver Creek, I don't wanna use the name, but. Um, he was able to help pass the legislation that, you know, can maybe help some of our seniors and those on a fixed income.
Okay, so um. Go ahead.
In terms, in terms of the CMA or folks having access to something easy. Um, I actually got my mitts through a Realtor. Yesterday on the Board of Realtors. Twenty-twenty-two second quarter um, market report. Is that a useful tool for people to take a look at, just have a basic understanding? I don't know if it goes down neighborhood by neighborhood, but just give an idea of what the properties may be worth. Oh boy, you're asking a lot of this guy. Um, I've got my hands on the Board of Realtors mapping report from second quarter twenty-twenty-two. And those ages, you know, grab tons outside of that. The median, median price of property in Park City, I think, is three point seven million, uh, the average price is four million. Uh, Snyderville Basin's the last, I think that was about two point four million.
That's correct.
As a median, yeah. About three million, two point seven, something like that.
Yes.
For um, for the average. I did not, I don't, I don't remember looking at, at North Summit County or necessarily South Summit County. They have even broader ranges heading out toward Midway and kind of the broader area, including Heber. Is that a place where people can, at least get a thumbnail? Your properties may not match perfectly, again, as you're saying, if you've got.
Right.
You know, if you're a manufactured home, it's different from a.
What, what we're finding with a lot of our phone calls and our emails is that when we do point them in that direction. They're realizing they're, they are at market value. The phone calls that I've um, taken from some of our realtors or local realtors who have been contacted by our taxpayers. That, that's the news that they're getting, they're, they are at market value or. But still undervalued and there's nothing that a CMA is going to help.
Can I ask another question? Um, I had a phone call um, with a resident today and. There's a piece of property they used to own, they sold, it's in, in Park City. Um. It was assessed, I think, at a million dollars and I think they said it recently sold for somewhere between nine and eleven million dollars. Um, it's still showing the original assessment. Is that just something that unless somebody reports it? Is that just something that slips by until the twenty percent reassessment or it hits a, how does that, how do, how does something like that?
We've addressed that property and that's why I say, don't feel um, afraid to say, well, what's up with that? As this taxpayer did, and I think, is this in Old Town that you're referring to?
Uh, I, I assume so.
Okay, so it, it was, and the, the issue that we had with that, it was values of residential property, but then it was changing uses. And going more from not just a nightly rental, but more into a bed and breakfast, but then back to residential. Well, what happened was the model within our CAMIS system was coded as commercial. But the RDN that tells us the area that the property is in was still in residential. So when the commercial appraiser was factoring, it, it didn't catch it. Because it was in the wrong RDN and when the residential appraiser was facting, it didn't catch it because he was raising land and home values and those codes were commercial. So we're happy to have had that information because we were able to catch that and we've corrected the coding. Um, but also don't um, think of, because the way this taxpayer worded it, she'd heard through the grapevine that it sold by nine million. What it was is it was listed for nine million for about five hundred and ten days, saw nothing, hasn't been listed or sold since, so. It, when we raised it, it didn't go to nine million because it clearly, nine million was an unrealistic ask, but it definitely has seen a huge increase and you'll see that next week.
We're also getting some questions about commercial properties and I'm not sure how those are valued. Also, I've got a report that McDonald's is valued at, I don't know, one point two million or something.
So, yes, I can, I can speak to that.
I remember we had an issue with the Montage Hotel a few years ago where. Was it market value versus a property value?
Replacement costs, construction costs.
Well, we're, we are, right now, we have open appeals with Talisker and the Montage Hotel for twenty-two. We are in an open appeal now with Talisker, probably in the Montage Hotel for twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one, we anticipate twenty-twenty-two. Council may be reminded, uh, and also Tom, now that he's gone. But we have come to you there for the contingency fund to defend that value. And so that, along with our ski resorts, are under a contract um, with a bigger firm to bring in those market values for those two properties. But you may have read a recent article, I think it came out just this morning in the Desert News that talked about, well. Our commercial values aren't seeing, you know, the increase that our home tops are, so that shift is coming back to our home tops. We um, had an issue when I took office in twenty-twenty and um, we brought in a new commercial appraiser. The, what we've found, what we knew and suspected and what we've found with our. Uh, Nick with the State Tax Commission and pushing all that information out, having him sort that for us in the GIS. Bringing it back, we have five hundred commercial properties that have not been revalued in a five-year period for that detailed review. So that happened not under my watch, so in twenty-nineteen, we had no change. But we have Kenny Jacobson now doing a thorough job. In his capacity as associate commercial appraiser. Uh, you may recall in twenty-twenty, the CAMIS area was done, we had an increase of over thirty-eight million dollars in CAMIS. This year, you'll be hearing, I'm sure, from Old Town, we had an increase of eight hundred and fifty-four million in Old Town Commercial. Kenny this year or next year's.
Eight hundred and fifty-four million?
Yes. Kenny is now working on Prospector and Canyons, our current market value in this reappraisal area is three hundred and seventy-six million. He's anticipating at least three times that for twenty-twenty-three, so.
I don't mean to cut you off, but I. I. It's.
That's Martin's game. It's Martin.
I think, I think you're missing the point, that what, what happens when that value goes up. The, the rate goes down, the amount that the taxing entities collect is the same.
Right.
Other than new growth. Okay.
You're getting twice as much.
I know the state school district does, the fire district does, and others.
Because the.
Excuse me.
Is shifting from, from McDonald's to you.
Well.
You're paying the taxes that McDonald's should be paying.
Let me, I, hang on just a sec. All right, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let, I'm gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna answer some questions. Hey, excuse me, are you in charge here? Okay, thank you. We appreciate your coming here and we are going to listen to some questions from you. I don't wanna hear, if possible. I think you've heard the process here, I think everyone's here because they think their value and their tax is too high. Okay, then, then those, I want, I want to hear new information, but we, I don't think it'll do any good because. We've explained to you, there isn't anything we can do about, about the valuations that you have. Nor about the certified rate, and those two things when multiplied together result in your tax. So what you can do is appeal, if there's some new information, we would love to hear that. Okay, and we're gonna have, I'd like, those that would like to speak, we're gonna give everyone two minutes. One to queue up over here at this, at this mic, at this podium.
I hear Mr. Davis.
Hey Chris, do you wanna, since it's six o'clock, do you wanna, other issues first? Uh, a real pass here, if there's somebody in here who wants to speak.
I think, I'm, could, could I get you, excuse me, could everybody please be quiet so we can hear? I want you to, I, I'd like you to, I want you to postpone your comment for one minute. I would like to know if there's anybody in the audience or on the Zoom that would like to address the council on a matter that is not on our agenda. Obviously, this tax matter is, or that is not the subject of a pending land use application. Is there anybody here? Raise your hand if you wanna talk about something else. Is there anybody on the Zoom?
Uh, okay.
Okay, I feel sorry for him. All right, so now I'm gonna close public input, because there was none. State your name, who's keeping track of the time, because there's a lot of people here. Do we have, can, yeah, would you put the timer up? Two minutes, state your name and then please be succinct.
Sure, my name's Jeff Davis. So we just heard a lot of excuses. Of why certain properties didn't get valued, we don't have enough assessors. There's five hundred commercial properties that skipped giving the increase. That attracts every taxpayer. Every taxpayer is affected by each property that is under assessed. So here we go. I have a long speech written, but nobody wants to hear that. The real problem is that some of our properties received giant increases by many others. Remember, add here with a free curve of assessments. It is the properties that are framed under the assessor's radar that are causing these punishing tax increases. The fair assessments are literally paying the taxes for the under-assessed. My wife, Teresa and I quickly compiled a list of over a hundred properties, both commercial and residential. That will get tax reductions this year. If we would have had time, this list would be much bigger. Most, if not all of these, have significantly low assessments. McDonald's and Kimber, Walmart, Chase Bank, Starbucks, the list goes on and on. All with tax bill reductions. How about this, McDonald's, right across the street. Is valued at one point. How about this? McDonald's right across the street is valued at one point three million dollars. One point three, I would, I would guess that most of your houses are valued at more than the McDonald's across the street. By the way, that McDonald's is assessed at a lower value than it was three years ago. Lower than three years ago. Walmart is on this list. I could be a lot and all, I'll give you the list, I've got several copies of it.
I, I, have, have you run up two minutes already?
I see my time.
We, we don't pay it that way, but I, but I, if you have a list, hey, and.
As much as. Many other properties have had no increase in value for the last three years. And I say three years because as far as I can go back on their system, it doesn't let us look back further than three years. How can eight, eight properties have had no value increase in three years?
Okay, so.
Okay, so here's the, here's the big question. What do we do about it? We think that the entire twenty twenty two assessment needs to be invalidated and reworked so that all properties are assessed fairly and equitably as required by Utah law. You.
Thank you. Okay, you, hang on a second, you, hang on just a second. As much as I love your enthusiasm, please do not applaud or boo. Let's get through this. Please don't boo.
No, let's, let's be really clear. Act appropriately or I'm not going to sit here and listen.
Okay, guys, just hold up, I've got, I've got. Because I'd like them to mention, you're speaking to the house, thank you, we're saying, we're saying house. We, as our elected officials, we need to decide whether we continue to punish your residents at the expense of corporate giants, second homeowners, and even some resident homeowners that have somehow escaped the dreaded fair assessment. Can you bring back the mic about ten three? Okay, am I blasting out? Sorry about that. Sorry about that. I'm sorry about that. I'll read it again if we need to. My wife Teresa's a CPA. I'm a computer expert. Well, I used to be. Make ourselves available to write this. Our only concern here is to resolve the problem. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Would you give those, uh, hey? We know, we are, we know you're in favor of it. We got a lot to do here tonight. Well, give it to, we'd like a copy and give Stephanie and. Okay, who's up next and please state your name?
My name is Eddie Lonzak and I was gonna give my time to Jeff, but it sounds like he completed what he was saying. But to summarize, my understanding is that if year to year we have these minor increases or steady increases that we've had in the past, they weren't really problematic. We address ourselves per our own cases with the assessments and question whether or not it's at fair market value. Problem is now is that most of us are at fair market value, but like yours went up two hundred percent. Then all these other ones, the burden shifted to you.
Well, yeah, the point has been well made by, I forget his name, the previous speaker.
Right.
Uh, that, that if it's, if the values aren't fair, then, then there's some subsidizing others. We get that point.
Right. Saying it's not a super significant, it would almost be better to not, if you can't appraise everybody when there's such a huge increase and you only can appraise some, you're better off sticking with the old ones because it'll, the rate will be correcting, so you get the same revenue. But rather than when it goes up a bunch selectively nabbing some of them, you've just shifted the burden to them. That's the point.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Who, who's next and please state your name?
Yeah, my name is Wes Harris and I, I think maybe the, my question's been answered somewhat because I, I, I could not understand. I could not understand conceptually you, when you indicate that if the value goes up and the weight goes down. Now, I realize that's across the board, not with each property, but in my mind, I'm thinking, well, if, if that's the case and if property is increasing values, we all know it has over the past years, how could we have this increase and not have other people, I mean, ha- how not have the weight go down? In other words, i- if that's the case overall, and there will be some discrepancy, but you think that, yeah, my, if my weight, if my value goes up, my rate's gonna go down overall and my taxes might go up a little bit, but they're not gonna double like yours have, or, and mine have almost doubled. And that's what I, I didn't understand how, if that's happening, that teeter totter effect, why it is that.
It's in the aggregate, it's in the aggregate.
I understand, but if in the aggregate, shouldn't all, in the aggregate, all the rates be going up a little bit, some not going down?
I, this is, this is the function of the assessor. Please go ahead, your name.
My name is J F Flanders and I'd like to make an observation first. I would like to make an observation regarding the fact that in my neighborhood, I live in Park Meadows, a lot of my neighbors have seen increases well above twenty percent of their actual taxes. I'm not talking about the, the assessment of their, of their property. And this uh seems to me that twenty plus is well above the inflation rate. And that is, let's say, ten percent. So what is that money going to go? And uh it seems to me that the taxing authorities will have an excess amount of money at their disposal. So that's my first observation. The question that I have is, is there a way for us taxpayers to compare our last year collection to this upcoming collection in twenty twenty two and see the rate of increase, if there is such increase, and then compare them with the needs of the county and the city of Park City or wherever. So we can see how that stacks up against the needs of those uh governments. That's all.
Thank you. I, I think Matt Levitt can. Oh, we do? Um, I, I will, uh, we'll, we'll do one more here and then we'll do one from Zoom and then we'll go.
He actually came and nursing, can we please go before the deadline? Um, they've been, they've been sitting here just as long as you.
Please let, hey Brian, let me handle this, please. Okay. Um, I think Matt Levitt should be, who's at the back here, the plaid shirt, should be able to prepare a, a statement or a document that shows what our twenty twenty one property tax collections were in our three or four funds, what the twenty twenty two will be, and then there's the new growth component. Is that something that is possible to do?
Or I, I have it for all the taxing authorities in the county.
Okay, thank you. There's a way that that can be.
Yes.
On our website.
Make sure it's posted.
Thank you. Good, good comment. Next, please.
Hello, my name's John Snyder. I came to the meeting last week. I talked to them about having a similar thing. I wanted to see a breakdown of where all our money's going. I found that. It's on Transparent Utah. And it's gonna kind of frustrate because it caused my blood pressure to raise. The top ten county employees currently receive, and this is the top two, and this is their total compensation package. For the top ten county employees are currently getting two point two million a year. That frustrated me a little bit. It's on Transparent Utah. It's, I also do have a question. You say it's a seesaw thing and the county only receives an equal amount and only needs an equal amount, then why do we have a hundred and sixty three million dollar surplus over two years? What, what, why do we have that and why do we need an increase? I feel like our county has become very top heavy. We have a a leader, then we have all these different directors over fourteen different projects. I'm also concerned about our taxes on green belt. It's state law, and I looked that up on Title Fifty Nine, Chapter Two, Part Three of the Utah Code. Uh, subsection C says it provides uniform and equal treatment of parcels within the same class of real property throughout the county. We have areas that are declared green belt that have never been, never grown one barrel of hay or had one agriculture or land on them. That's on recreational property. We have others that are taxed as recreational property. We also have that wonderful open space fund. And that open space fund is paying for areas that can't or won't ever be developed. But we're, we're buying into that and yet places that are, were applied for to not be developed were turned down. And so they're subsequently being subdivided right now. And I would, I would like to add that many people I spoke with and invited to this meeting declined to come because they knew nothing would be done. And I just think that maybe we need some investigations. And I also think that our voices will be heard when the polls come around. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, we're gonna pause and go to one on the Zoom. Please stand by for a second.
She's got a fly girl on her.
Fly girl? Let's hear from. Okay, great. I don't see her on the screen or even a, a box that would show her. Okay, go ahead, please.
My name's Robert Brimhall and I have a question about one acre land that we own there in Marion. Um, when this land was originally purchased, uh, from my, my, when my parents purchased it and the survey was done, it was down to the middle of that road, SR thirty two. And from my understanding, talking to uh the guys that are coming in to help this trail, planning of it and that, they say that I don't own that in between the middle of the road or the state road right away, state is out there. And, but I've never been on my property tax and it says right on there, one acre. Yeah, but there's about a quarter of an acre there that I can't use. What do we do in that situation?
That sounds like if your value is based on an acre, there's a factual error that could be brought forward. Is that wrong?
I apologize, I was, had another tag here.
Stephanie, he, Mr. Brimhall said that his survey shows that he owns to the middle of the road on SR thirty two, which equates to a, an, an, a full acre, but uh, UDOT and others are claiming that they own the right of way and he was wondering how to deal with that. I suggested that that would be a factual error if, if the amount being appraised is the wrong size.
Well, he would need to start a push with the recorder's office because how it's recorded, if it's showing a full acre that's being shown in the recorder's office, so you'd want to start there to get that taken.
So now if I was to, uh, if we used to have it, you know, to where the county or whatever takes that property, it's probably gonna leave me with three quarters of an acre and I can't use my property according to where my land is in Marion there. Because you gotta have one acre of land. So a lot of that's resale value if I was to ever sell, which I'm not ever going to sell. But, you know, I've talked to the state guys, the state guy said, you know, everybody's saying that it actually improves my property to have a trail running right through the front yard, which it actually depreciates, it depreciates it. Because maybe not everybody wants everybody running through the front yard.
So the, uh, Robert, we've, we've talked a lot about that trail in previous meetings and we appreciate your participation. I, I think what I would recommend you do is that if you, if you think that value is being assigned to the portion of your lot encumbered by the road, that I would file an appeal based on that.
Okay, so does that mean that there's gonna be property that's gonna be lost?
No, not, not by appealing it, but I think you could argue, I'm not an expert, but you could argue that that road is subject to, uh, I mean, that, that portion of your property is unusable by you and therefore, you know, the, the portion that should be assessed is the lesser amount. You still own the, the full acre to get whatever zoning requirements you have.
But, but I'm not able to say what goes on in there. I was told in previous meetings that that's a public right of way and all this.
I think that's probably true. It's, it's not uncommon to have uh roads where people own to the center line in the early days before road dedications occurred. It's fairly common.
It is common.
So we have everybody, pretty much almost everybody on that SR thirty two that's in the same boat as I am.
Uh, I, I, I think. As to whether or not the state has a right to use that portion of your property. It, they, they've had long history of prescriptive right of way. And so they, you know, i- if, that would, if you for some reason wanted to take it back, you'd have to go through another process than this. It's beyond the subject of the, 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 the scope of this meeting tonight.
So what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, you know, it sounds to me like there's maybe some double taxing going on here. I'm paying the property taxes for that, but then there's also this trail thing that's supposed to come through and that trail is supposed to be paid for by some other kind of tax.
I, I think that the uh, the, the, the solution to that is for you to appeal your taxes based on the, uh, uh, on the value of your usable land and, and let the chips fall where they do with the Board of Equalization. That's all, I, I don't think that intermingling the road and the trail in this discussion are, are gonna be productive other than to say, obviously, if, if you're not able to use it, it's encumbered by other public uses, then, then you would, you know, i- if, then you would be representing that your value's less because you don't have a full acre.
I do have a full acre and that.
I, I, usable to you.
Correct, but I have it on paper. I have it as one.
No one's trying to take that from me.
It sounds to me like this is some of county is with that trail coming through and everybody else coming through and doing that.
Uh, we've been over the trail. I'd, I'd like to get up, we're talking about these taxes tonight. We can talk about the trail another time.
Right. But like what I'm saying is I'm paying, you know, for one acre of tax, taxes and stuff and I'm not being able to use that one full acre.
I'm, I'm getting. First of all, you don't really know what process the assessor went through to determine the value of your property, whether it was based on an acre or the fraction, a portion that's outside the roadway. Job, if you want to change what's been noticed, is to appeal and, and to demonstrate that you're used, that you only have portion of the acre that's usable to you due to, to rights of way held by others.
I would call and have a conversation with the appraiser because it may be that he has already addressed that, but if not, then that's something to bring to his attention, his or her attention.
Okay.
So I would have a conversation with the appraiser.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Did the, did our online participant show up?
She's still.
Okay, and how about the second one? Okay, please.
Hi, I'm Jeff Sedano and first off, thank you.
What, what's your name?
Jeff Sedano.
Thank you, Jeff.
So I own over here in Highland Estates and thank you guys all for coming. I know this is not a very fun topic to have to hear feedback from the public on. Um, so my general concern here is actually what the first Jeff was speaking to. There are a massive number of properties that are referenced every time I've heard about this on KPCW so far that have gone down in assessed value or are paying less in taxes. And that's my general problem here is I had an assessment last year that raised my property value by thirty six percent. I had one this year that raised it by fifty four percent. That means that I've had two assessments in subsequent years that have been a significant jump on value. There are then people or businesses, which it is very disturbing to me that businesses were not assessed appropriately. Thank you for sharing that detail with us, that are not being assessed appropriately. You gave your own example where your property went, jumped by two hundred sixty percent in value and your taxes went up by two hundred percent. To me, that screams that the office is dramatically understaffed and underfunded. Now, that's a problem that I see in the general way that the actual county is treating your team, where we're not staffing or assessing appropriately across the entire bookable property value that we have as a county. Um, I know that's not realistic for us to be able to do everything every single year, but when we have taxes that are as dramatically disparate as they are right now, it is critical for us to go through and actually assess properties appropriately and in a timely manner. So a two hundred sixty percent assessment jump, unacceptable. Two double-digit assessment jumps year after year, which are not in line with market rate, also unacceptable. So my question for the team is, how are we going to go through and address that moving forward? And how are we going to assure that the public has visibility to the properties that are dramatically under assessed? Someone like Jeff has the technical skill and I could go through. Someone like Jeff has the technical skill and I could go through and do this exact same thing. I actually am impressed that someone else here has done it. To go through and establish the properties that are not assessed properly. And I would like to know just what, what are we doing to float that with the public? Cause the fact that the montage is undervalued on this list that was just given, that means that I'm paying the montage's taxes. I already pay them when I go in and buy food.
So lem- let me address that really quickly as far as commercial. I agree with that and that happened outside of my watch. I, I haven't been in office for that long, so I can work with State Tax Commission. Those five hundred parcels were in the Snyderville Basin area are McDonald's, that's the example that was used. So I can work with the State Tax Commission and trying to get some help in getting those, the Snyderville Basin area quickly brought up rather than waiting for Mr. Jacobson to get around to the detailed review. The problem that we have, you mentioned montage. And Dave, you can monitor how much I can go into detail as far as an open appeal for a commercial property, but it is very difficult for our office. We have to hire outside firms that are specialized in these large corporations. And frankly, these corporations have attorneys with billable hours and deep pockets and they know that the county does not. So already to even defend that value, we're at sixty thousand just for the appraisal. That doesn't even count the hours and the time and the resources. It's already pulling from myself, from Mr. Jacobson and from Helen Schwan in our attorney's office. So, and we are now going to do our ski resorts. So in an effort to work with those larger corporations, we call to say, you know, we're, we're in a process of reappraisal. We need to bring these three ski resorts into line, immediately have wired up. And so it's not, it's not an easy process and sometimes it's costly even to defend and get those values where they are. It costs tens of thousands of dollars to even defend those big, large corporation values.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that. And that's why I said upfront, your team is understaffed and underfunded right now. And I would guarantee that you would admit to that either on the record or off the record. And I would like the county to go through and address that piece as part of what we're doing in truce and taxation and ideally go through and fund those positions appropriately so that you can actually tax all of us fairly. Cause sometimes that costs money to do and I get that. My last part of the question though is, all of us who've been reassessed this year again, are going to see our property values decrease because with the market rate increases we've seen on interest rates, property values are dropping like a stone under two million dollars right now. What are we going to do next year to reassess the people who have been assessed this year to make sure that they're in line again at market rate? Since my, I was assessed twice in the last two years, I guarantee it's not gonna happen again. And I don't have a problem with my house's rate, by the way. I get it. I have to pay market rate.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, I'm gonna leave your, the answering of your questions to the end because I want it, that, that you've hit on some issues the other Jeff raised and we wanna have a discussion about that. Let's go with the gentleman in the red hat, please.
Good evening. My name is Greg Lawfer and thanks for the opportunity to make some comments. Um, I'd like some clarification if I could on the five-year process and the, um, that properties are reassessed, twenty percent of the properties are reassessed each year. Because this gentleman before me just spoke, that has not been my recent experience. I've been a resident of Summit County for twenty-five years, uh, and I was used to moderate tax increases as values went up in, um, in our community. Last year, for the twenty twenty-one tax year, my property, my valuation increased by forty-four percent. I received this year's notice and I've been increased by another sixty-six percent. So clearly I'm not getting the impact of the twenty percent rule. Seems like my property is being revalued, uh, each year. The second comment that I'd like to make was to earlier, you mentioned that there was an error in your system. I don't know if this is also an error in the system, but when you go to the, uh, your system, you can pull up each property and see its value each year. I live in a development that has sub-communities within it. I live in Promontory. My entire, if you will, sub-community of Signal Hill, we've all had increases two years in a row. Four houses, four lots away, it happens to be called Lookout Ridge. Lookout Ridge has no increase whatsoever. We are all in Promontory. I don't want my neighbor's taxes to increase either, but it feels to me like mine are going up. Theirs are staying flat. If the budgets remain the same, we, we know what this issue is. We've discussed it all evening long. I don't know if that's an issue within your system or another error.
That, that is not necessarily an error. Promontory is a bit of a different animal and what we do find, even with homes that are only within a ten-year age, they're, uh, more what I call like the ski lodge style of home. And the newer homes, the more modern homes are actually selling higher and it is difficult to apply a sales ratio study when Promontory because we have so many sales across the board.
So last year I appealed as well. Homes that were fifteen years old were used as comps to my home, which was built in twenty nineteen. Adjustments are made in those detailed analysis that you do. So there are comps. And the county is using comps in the detailed appraisals when appeals are being made that are outside of my immediate neighborhood, that are homes that are ten years old, that are four times the size of my home.
But whenever you have an appraisal though, that they do a market analysis, they're making those market adjustments for size and age. They've been made.
I, I have the detailed appraisal from my appeal.
Yeah.
My, my point simply is, you're telling me those houses that are literally three lots away, some of which are a year older than mine, some are ten years older than mine. I don't understand why an entire sub-development within Promontory has no increase in the value of a dwelling.
It depends on if they've had increases that you're not aware of. So what I'm saying is, is if, are they at market value? If they've had no increase, but they're at market value.
They are at market value because I'm looking at your valuation. It breaks out dwelling or improvements. It breaks out land. There is no increase whatsoever for those dwellings, units. And I can tell you, one of the houses in that particular station, situation just went on the market for two million dollars over what the dwelling assessed value is. It's clear to me that there are anomalies in, within the system. And it just strikes me is that, as many people have said this evening, that many of us, our taxes are going up considerably. Others are staying flat, potentially going down, and the burden is not being shared equally in our community. And I couldn't agree more that that has to be addressed. Thank you.
We're good? Please come up and state your name.
Hi, my name is Jen Heineman. Um, I don't really have a question, um, but I did go through this experience about fifteen years ago with Salt Lake County. And my assessments went way up and I was really terrified and I jumped down to the, in the, you know, if the taxes, um, what the taxes would be, and it was ten dollars difference. Um, and then of course the areas where the taxes went up and, and it just worked beautifully. Um, I wasn't excited about my assessment going up, but things go up. I'm not gonna complain about my assessment right now because I think it's fairly fair, but all your remedies don't apply to me because the actual tax that I'm paying more is, is astronomical. It's, it's four times my tax bill is just the assessment part. It's not the new taxes. It's the assessment part. And your examples that you gave today were all not related to the person that was complaining. It was related to their neighbors having a problem. And how are we supposed to fix that? Like, that's not something I have any control over. So I wanna heartily agree that, one, I don't think your IT systems are really satisfactory um, with all these problems that you're finding and the, and the ease, well, the lack of ease of being able to fix them or find them and fix them without someone complaining about them.
Well, but within that, we're talking about thirteen different properties. So that in the whole scheme of things is not a huge.
No, but it was, it was your examples that I was listening to and I'm like, well, that, what am I supposed to do about that? Knock on all my neighbor's doors and find out what they got assessed and then complain about them? I mean, that's not something I'm gonna do. And second, I do think you're sorely understaffed for something like this. Um, because it should be fair. Everyone should be taxed fairly and there's a pretty big group of us that haven't been. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, please.
Hi, my name is BS Mohan. I have two questions mainly for the assessor. Uh, second Jeff asked a similar question that I was going to ask. Let's say with this five-year cycle, you take twenty percent of the, uh, dwellings. House market prices have doubled this year. So you jack up the prices by twenty, hundred percent. Next year comes around, now you move to the second twenty percent, market crashes. What are you going to do? Are you going to reduce the first twenty percents valued by fifty percent or are you going to take only the second twenty percent population and reduce it? How are you going to make it equal?
We, we do address a declining market as well. I lived through two thousand seven, eight, nine and the aftermath that followed that. So just like in an increasing market where we're running a year behind on two thousand and one, in a decreasing market, we're also a year behind in catching up at those decreasing values. That's why the state has set the lean date of January first and requires everybody to be judged off the same data set for, for the year prior. So in a declining market, for example, in two thousand and seven and eight, when everything crashed, it took all the assessors in the state of Utah that year to start to catch up to that decline market.
Okay, so, so basically, yeah.
Well, I, I think that one thing that you said that may not be accurate and Stephanie and Cory tried to explain it, which is there's a state requirement that every five years, properties have a specific reassessment. But in the other four years, all properties are supposed to be adjusted to within five percent of market, whatever that is, market. And so there are, there's a formula or some ratios or some other things that are supposed to deal with. So if like in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two, if in one of those two years, you were the unfortunate fellow that got your property reassessed, that doesn't mean that the other sixty percent of the properties are, are left untouched. They're supposed to be adjusted to within five percent of market. Again, that, there, there, there's been some interesting things raised here and we're gonna talk about those in a minute. But, but it's not like that it's just every five years that the property values are adjusted. They should be adjusted every year. There's a detailed look every five.
Okay. Uh, second question is, I think I heard you say that if there is no sales in the development, you really think the mark, the value hasn't gone up and you don't reassess. If that's the case, let's say something like Glenwild, prices skyrocket. Nobody can afford to buy there, so there are no sales. So what do you do? Do you say that, oh no, there was no sales, so they're not gonna increase the value?
So that is part of my request in my budget the last couple of years, asking for an additional staff member for a data analyst. Hoping that we can do just that because we do realize that market is going up, but we have to have a method to that madness. We can't just stick a, a number on it that can't be developed or can't be defended by sales or some method of appraisal. Because if I jack that area up, for example, just those twelve lots went up thirty-one million dollars. So Glenwild has how many homes in it? If that increases a hundred million and I haven't got sales to back it, we have really messed up the entities, the tax rates and the entities that are budgeting off of that. So I do agree that, that those areas without specific sales should still be coming up, but what we need is a method to apply that. We can't just smoke them out. So it's, so it's.
I think we should give them budget to higher.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Dan Fuller.
Hi, Dan.
As a trained economist, I'm really sympathetic to your problems of assessing values. Uh, you don't know the value of my home until it actually sells. So you've gotta go and do some estimates on this. My issue is, or my concern is that what you're mainly looking at is the flow of sales going through. And I'm worried that you're using the average of comparable home sales. And as, as, as a trained economist, you know, uh, I remember statistics class I took in nineteen seventy-six. I said, well, you know, the average salary of graduating seniors from the University of Virginia this year was seventy-six thousand dollars, which at that time was a huge amount of money. Well, what drove that was Tree Rollins graduated and he was given a huge MBA contract at that point. So the point of it is, is that when you have just a small flow of new sales going through with a relatively large stock, you get outliers. They're really pulling the average price away. And that's affecting our valuations adversely. And the only way we can address that is with a costly appeal. So I'm wondering if you have ever given consideration to using maybe a median instead of an average, like a lot of the housing statistics use now at this point.
So in our racial link program, when we pull, we pull it into Excel to work it and then put our numbers back into racial link. But we do throw out those outliers. If we have outliers that are completely outside of the norm, we do not use those in our sales ratios.
How do you determine an outlier?
By the percent difference. If we have in the same.
Not by standard deviation or anything like that, but by a percent difference?
It, this would be nice to have a data analyst to help me with the statistical modeling, wouldn't it? So we do throw out those outliers.
But you still use just the average of the.
The remainder, but we do then break it apart by age and square foot and quality.
Oh, I know you do the adjustments. Yeah, I, I can get that part.
Yeah.
Okay, so you've never tried a medium?
We, we look at that as well in the racial link. I wish I had my, um, thing here. I can actually, if you'd like, I'd like to share that with you. I can email that to you if you'd like.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Please state your name and.
Hello, I'm Teresa Gannos. Um, hi.
Are you the CPA?
I am.
Well, we're glad to hear from you.
Wife of the first crazy Jeff, who was excited. And I said I wasn't gonna talk.
He did alright. He even gave you some crib notes, so we're eager to hear.
So first off, our property was reassessed in twenty nineteen. We almost doubled. We spoke to you then. And, um, you know, we're told that you would get to all the other neighborhoods in time. And our neighbors still haven't changed and we almost doubled again. So.
But those are the twelve lots that were.
Oh, okay. I wasn't sure if you were talking about my neighborhood.
I didn't wanna.
Okay, it's fine. Okay, so my question is, the ones that you said are on, um, standby? Like the one in Old Town that I used to live next door to, um, and I guess the ones next to me, um, you will address those when the bills come out?
Uh-huh, they're already addressed. The Board of Equalization will see them next week.
That's good. Um, I wanna address something that, um, Chris, I think it's, you're Chris, right? So you were saying that it has to be brought back to market value within five percent, um, every year? That is the whole market though, not each house.
Well, I, I was parroting what Stephanie said.
I'm just.
The rule is that each property is supposed to be brought within five percent of market value.
The sales ratio study needs to be within five percent. So even within the sales, you still have some that are a little bit low and then you still have some cells that are a little bit high. And just like Mr. Fuller was talking, we're throwing out those outliers and going with the bulk of our sales. So we take those and then we say, well, this area, this subdivision, we try to go a little bit bigger than subdivision into our districts. And if those are, yeah, say we are thirty percent low, we apply that thirty percent, not just to the sales, but to everybody in that district or neighborhood.
So how do you explain the homes like in Deer Valley in Nakoma, for instance? You know, just go to the map, click on one, their bill's going down three thousand dollars. I go to all the neighbors, the only one that didn't go up, they're doing renovation. I can see on your site, there's a picture of it, you know, they're, they're squeaking on it or whatever. But every homeowner in that area is getting a, almost three thousand dollar reduction this year.
But not their values. Yes, they're probably would have, if we didn't have sales in the Deer Valley area to warrant increasing values, we wouldn't have done that. So it's, what's decreasing is their tax bill, not their tax value. Their market value is not changed.
But so you're saying my house on Mountain Top went up more in value than ski in ski out in Deer Valley too?
Possibly in just this year. So if you looked, so.
Okay, I find that hard to believe.
And by the same token, if we don't have the sales, and this is another reason we're utilizing the State Tax Commission. Nick Castanza is helping us as well as hopefully uh the added position. So that we can take those quality type homes, Canyons, Deer Valley, and apply that same methodology. But I have to have something to back that and defend those values.
I can appreciate that um a lot of things were brought to your attention recently that are skewing a lot of people's bills. I understand that. But my concern is for the people who it's going to be a real financial burden for them this year. And so, you know, what percentage, like all these corporate owned properties are not, they haven't been raised in forever?
Well, just in Snyderville Basin.
Well, the hospital got a sixty five thousand dollar reduction in their tax bill this year.
Well, the hospital is exempt.
No, yeah, well, they had a bill. It was like sixty five thousand less.
Well, they have a portion of their building that's taxable because it's used for profit, but otherwise they're.
But it's their bills lower sixty five thousand dollars because they want their value wasn't raised. That's all I'm saying is.
Right, but you're talking, if you're looking at IHC, it's just seriously a little sweet within the within.
Their bill went down, and their bill going down transfers the burden to all of the other people.
Well, their tax rate went down and their tax bill went down, but their market value didn't.
Okay, so. Can this this assessment being validated? Is there a process for that?
No, I have never seen that.
That's that's one of the, Teresa, I want to talk to our counsel about that, so some of the things that.
Okay, I'm um I'm willing to help, you know, however I can. Just would like it to be, you know, fair. So I'm not going to be an appraiser, but I will help. If you need some data analyzed, I can do that. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Who's next, please? No one's online, I assume?
Hi, uh, Jean Taven. I live on fifty two hundred North in Park City.
I've heard of it.
But.
That's near my neighborhood.
I know it is. Um, I'm just curious, how can I find the prices of what things have actually sold for? Because I've seen things for sale at pretty astronomical prices, but just to see actuals. And I'm sorry, because I came in late. I was at work.
That's okay. Um, we I didn't actually address. That's a good question. The state of Utah is a non-disclosure state, so we can't just give outsells. But if you were to call and talk to your appraiser, they could tell you within your area, we had.
Pardon? Contact who?
The appraiser in your area, Matt Holmes. You're over on the old Rancho, right? Fifty two, is that right? So I think it'd be Matt Home. So um. I just lost my train of thought, sorry. Oh, um, sales, we can give you a range of sales. We've had X amount of sales that range from this to this. Because we are a non-disclosure state. However, if you go into an appeal situation and there's non-disclosures in there, then we can then show you. This house sold for this and and be more detailed back.
Because it's really difficult. I mean, I don't know if I want to go through the whole appeal thing. I've done it in another state, and it's really hard to do.
No, it's it's really, if you if you know a local realtor and you can just say.
Asking a Realtor is really.
Asking a Realtor is a really good way to go. A lot of them provide a CMA at no cost. So if if you're just saying, I I really would like to know, if I were to list my home, what what would you list it for? What could I sell my home for? But let them get you a CMA. You submit that online through WWW Summit County backslash BOE. And then you and then we can address it then. What will happen is that the appraiser will then look at that CMA. And if we find that there are good sales, maybe that we didn't have or we hadn't considered. We can make adjustments if it's more specific to your home rather than the mass appraisal broad brush that we put on a lot of our properties. Because we do mass appraisal. We can make that adjustment then. It comes before the Board of Equalization as a recommendation. If we disagree with that, you still have the opportunity to go before a hearing officer and actually state your case.
Yeah, before. It's it's just so hard because some of the homes are quite older homes and there are a lot of tear downs. I mean, I've had people say, oh, you know, it's, you know, I live in a very big house and I'm very fortunate to live there. I've owned it for since two. We've lived, I've lived there since two thousand and seven, but I've had people tell me, oh, this is going to be a tear down. And, you know, to have it double in value this year, I honestly don't think I can sell it that for that much. And.
Then what I would do, I would ask a a realtor to give you a CMA on that. Because we do do mass appraisal, and that's what the Board of Equalization is for, is to catch any of those outliers. It's possible that you are outlier on the high end. So we can take an individual look at your property, but we need you to start the appeal process so that we can can do that. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Jane. Is we have, we actually have some, yeah, we have someone online, but go ahead quickly.
Sorry, I can't hear whoever's the member of the public. I can't hear what he's saying. If he could go to microphone, please.
The the question was asking if I'm going to file an appeal, we're told we should provide comparables from the area. So I'm asking, how should we define area? Is it a certain distance? Is it within a mile radius of my home? Is it within my, in in my case, my subdivision within promontory? How do we define area? And the second clarification, just for purposes of an appeal, would be um the time. I know you said it as of January one, so I'm going to look for sales.
In twenty twenty one.
To January one as I can get. Can I bring you a sale from February of twenty two?
No.
Why not? Prices are going up, you said, in the first quarter of twenty two. That sale would be even higher. Why wouldn't you accept?
They are, but I can tell you, I've been in enough appeals at the State Tax Commission. That the commissioners, as well as any ALJ, that here's the case, will require that you stay in the twenty twenty one tax year.
So I can bring you comps from earlier in twenty one, let's say from July. But I have to adjust those because the market's been increasing from July to January. Is that correct?
You would want to do a time adjustment, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Did did you have a comment? And then we have somebody online next.
I just want to ask, my name's Richard Jappa. Can you tell me what the appraised value was the year before, the total appraisal of the county of taxable? And how many, how it went up the next year?
So for twenty twenty one, and this is just a rounded number, thirty three billion, and this year we are forty. Uh huh, and we increased twelve billion this year to forty five.
Forty five. Now, I've got forty five. How much of that was the reassessment? And how much of that was for new construction?
Our new growth numbers were one point three billion.
Say that again?
New growth numbers were one point three billion.
Only one point three?
Yeah, that we were happy with that. Usually, you know, we're in the eight hundred, nine hundred thousand new growth uh number, so.
I understand, because it affects the total tax at the end. That's what I'm trying to find out is how you came up with it. Of of the increase, that's it.
Okay, so new growth is new homes, new construction is what. That it's new lots that have been formed or subdivided, new homes.
And how do you come up with the appraiser?
The same we do with existing properties. We put that into the Kama system, their cost out, and then applied to the sales ratio study. To factor either up or down, depending on their area and and type of home and all of all of the other factors that we consider.
Okay, so what you're saying is, because the the appraised value went up fifty percent. From thirty three in that building to forty five.
Some of that is market increases and some of it is if we've been undervalued and we're finding that in our sales ratio study. We're bringing those values to market value.
You're saying that this year it's forty five billion.
That's correct.
Well, there's two billion of that that's new growth, so your number's close. It'd be ten divided by thirty three.
I need to.
Which is about a third.
Because I'm trying to see how the total taxes went up, if the value of the of went up. All right, let's say forty percent, just doing it roughly in my head, that it went up forty percent. That the taxes that you're you're knowledgeable and all that shouldn't go up to the same degree. That's what I'm trying to figure out if there's a mistake.
Well, I think the the simple answer, there's winners and losers. The simple answer is there's winners and losers. That's that's the point that the first Jeff made. That the that the increases in value have not been across the board. Either there's commercial properties that are lagging or other residences, some of it, you know, the fellow in promontory said his.
But the tax, the 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 tax bills went out at forty five billion.
Well, yeah, you got to deduct the new growth.
I understand the value, but when you use the value, you're using, of course, there's the second home, but.
Is that's the taxable value, right, Stephanie? That's not assessed value.
Market, that was the market value.
Okay, so that doesn't account primary exemption and green belt. So you've got, that's that's not, you need to ask more, a little more detail. Richard, you're doing well here, though. What's good? You're doing well. It's good.
I guess that's a question.
No, I know, they're good questions.
Prices went up if they, if you, if we built so many new houses.
Yeah, you guys are doing a good job.
Trying to lower the taxes.
I I think that uh. There's a different set of numbers. There's market value and there's taxable value, and they're different numbers.
Let's go to market, though. How much did market?
That's so she gave you a market value.
Okay, then what's taxable?
Well, I don't have that in front of me. I apologize my.
But so taxable value is net of the primary exemption, green belt, tax exempt properties. And so it's a much lower, it's it's a lower number, maybe by.
But this percentage should stay close to the century of going up.
Uh, yeah, but should it it it's it's a it's a straight line calculation.
How how we get to the taxable value is what does change? You, oh, absolutely. In fact, if you want me to hear.
Brian, we're going to hear from the person online. Did you say we had one? All right. Jeff, do you have something more to say to us? Just one more thing, please. I want to wait till. Give Richard a chance to get his thing done. Richard, it's good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Sorry to check this through this.
No, that's all right. You didn't ask for any building inspection. This is the first time you've not asked for one.
That's at a different time. You're not asking about the budget now.
Okay, I get it.
I don't want to waste your time.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm a little, I'm a little calmer now.
That wife of yours does a night under the falling.
So I just want to clarify something so that I understand it. So let's assume that all property values would have gone up thirty five percent. Which is the approximate difference in the market value. Is that right? Thirty five percent. The market value went up approximately thirty five percent from thirty four billion to forty two billion, whatever. So let's call it thirty five percent. So if all property values would have gone up by thirty five percent. We would have very little change in anyone's tax bill. Is that correct? I know there would be some change, but there would not be significant change. Is that right?
We have to do is we have to address sales and market areas. So the example I tried to use in Old Ranch Road seeing such huge increases. And they're wondering, well, why am I seeing a hundred percent increase? Chris saying two hundred something. Why am I, why isn't Ranch Place and all of these others only seeing thirty or sixty? And that is because we've had sales most recently that have been creeping their sales.
And I understand that. That's not my question.
I think I could phrase it a different way.
Okay.
Let's presume that there is one property in the whole county, not counting new growth, one property. Last year it was valued at thirty four billion, thirty three billion.
Yes.
This year it's valued at forty five billion. One property, no new growth. And forget that Weber Basin's got a raise and that the multi multi county, forget all of that. Then the tax rate would have dropped exactly equal such that the tax bill would have been the same.
You're the. That is my question, so.
And I believe that's true. If there were, now the problem is, there's not one this.
No, thirty two thousand.
I understand that. And and some of them.
I listen, I completely understand it. What I want people to understand is that if everyone was raised equally. Let's say we were at this Nirvana where everyone got to fair market value at some point, and let's say that happened in twenty twenty one. Every property was at fair market value. Then in general, every property would have raised thirty five percent. Their fair market value would have gone up thirty five percent. But their tax bill would have remained virtually the same. Now, the bigger properties, if you've got a twenty million dollar property, your bill is going to go up more than somebody with a five hundred thousand dollar property percentage wise. Just because of the big numbers. But is is that is that correct? And 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 in this, what I'm what I'm trying to get across to the people?
Yes, I think in a perfect world, if that were the case. But that's not what we deal with. We deal with very diverse properties, especially in some counties.
Now, I know.
And also your sales, a lot of times you'll see property values increasing in your upper end homes. And then people can't afford that, so then they start coming down and they cannot, they can afford the three hundred thousand dollar home. But now this person who can't afford the million dollar home will come and pay four or five for that three, what was previously a three hundred thousand dollar.
I realize all that.
But it doesn't happen all at once.
It's it, I think it drives my point home, though, in that. A huge part of our tax base of our properties have not been increased. And we've got a a whole motherboard that has been increased, and the the properties that have not gotten increases. Are paying the taxes for the ones that have.
Information that was given, the information.
Absolutely.
To us just yesterday, and again, we have not scrubbed that, but we we were aware and we were not surprised by the data. For the commercial basin, Snyderville basin and areas in Weber Canyon. Otherwise, properties are being detail reviewed every five years. They are being looked at and sales are being analyzed and applied.
But I would like to get, if if you could get us a report of this for this. And they're working on getting me the actual database so that I can do it myself. I'd like to know the number of properties that have received decreases in their tax bill. Or let's say less than a ten percent increase in their property value. Is that something that you could provide? Because that would tell us a lot. If we knew, so nobody should have gotten uh less than a ten percent increase in value in today's market. Unless their house burned down or uh, you know, some calamity happened. Is that something that you could provide us?
We have is.
Roger, I.
Jeff, I'd like to, I'd like to share. I'm I'm trying to figure out whether we're remarkably unique or different from other places. There's a an article yesterday in the Deseret News. It talks about changing prices in Twella County, where things have gone up substantially in Salt Lake. One of the commercial issues is, and Stephanie's disclosed that, and we knew this. Apparently, the assessors has not kept track of commercial assessments for a long time. And she's brought in people to try and fix that. That's not going to happen overnight. But there is an interesting thing here that they're talking about, and that's that. This particular year and probably last year, we, the pandemic started this slide. And we saw that, I live in the neighborhood that Tony Shea moved into in twenty twenty. And so there was a house that went on the market at, like, went on the market at twelve two, and Tony offered purportedly fifteen two if they would move in five days.
Heard that.
Um, and somebody wandered by my house and tossed out an absurd number, and I mean, it was just a crazy time. So twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, I talked to a real estate agent. Yesterday, as I said, trying to get some of these numbers under my belt. And we're still seeing very high prices. The market is not sagging necessarily here. Where where we are, that's probably different in different parts of the county. But here they say that that the housing prices rose so dramatically because of what happened with the pandemic. And the demographic shifts that we had here with people coming in, not Summit County, talking about Salt Lake City, we're talking about Twella. Talking about other areas, commercial rose about seventeen percent. Housing car prices rose far higher than that. So the commercial properties were being very valued, even had Stephanie's office been able to keep track before she took office. At the assessor's office, kept up with it. They didn't increase nearly as much as the housing prices have. And I think we've seen that in most places here. We could, there was a time where we could isolate places in families. Um, in 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 North Summit County and say, you know, they're immune from this kind of thing. It's not been immune.
No, I get that.
Dramatic price increases across the board.
No, I realize that.
Now, that's, as close, I think you exaggerate. I hope you exaggerate.
One one last point I'll 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 clear. We never get the money back for these over assessments. There's no refund. There's no, well, in in at the end of this five year cycle, when everybody's caught up. Everything's going to equalize and everything will be all fair. We never get the money back. Okay, it's it's not fair. I believe that it's illegal. It's, it's not fair. I believe that it's illegal. And the assessor is saying that she knows that her assessment is invalid because she doesn't have the staff. The system doesn't work properly. Some properties haven't been assessed in five years.
Well, we're talking about a select group in a select area. So we're talking about the Snyderville Basin commercial. That's one of the, that's.
I didn't say that about commercial. I did not hear you say that about.
That's correct.
Not just, just the, the properties that we pointed out that has some markers that's.
I can pick and choose in any situation, individual data points or any kind of analysis. And I can say these data points show that you have a very bad process. I'm not going to accept that here because they have a broader process. And again, I'm seeing it across the board in stories like this. Now, there's a process for assessing fair market value. There's also a process for appealing those assessments. If you feel like your assessment on your property doesn't meet fair market value and you've been over assessed, you should bring it to the Board of Equalization.
But there's not a process for appealing my neighbor's property or McDonald's property or Walmart's property. There's no process for me to say, where's the money that I'm paying so that Walmart's bill can be lower? There's no process for that. The only process for that would be to invalidate the assessment, reset.
Let's get to that question.
To me, that's the only, that's, that's the only fair way to do it. It's just not fair.
Jeff, you've made some great points. Thank you and thanks to everyone. I'd like to, I would like to now to online, then we're gonna close this public input portion, have a discussion. Let's go with the first online. Do we? Suzie, are you with us? Let's hear from Gina Mason. He probably has a university.
Hi, uh, my name's Gina Mason. I really appreciate all that you've done. I just have, um, two questions that I want to make sure that I have clarified. The first question is, is it my understanding that it's every five years you come back through and assess properties within neighborhoods?
Yes, the, the details of the properties. We try to see if there's been any improvements made. And a lot of times we don't get a lot of new information. Uh, we send out the questionnaires to ask, have you finished your basement? Have you had any, um, major remodels in bathrooms and kitchens? And so, uh, a lot of times our detail review is from a street view to see.
Okay.
If ascertained major changes have been made.
Okay. And then was it also my understanding that I heard you say that property values went up substantially on Old Ranch Road, but areas like Silver Springs Ranch Place did not see the same, um, increases? The average in Ranch Place was about, or the Ranch Place values were, went up about thirty percent or thirty two percent?
The concern was, why did Old Ranch Road area increase a hundred plus percent? And other areas like Ranch Place and Snyder's Mail and those only increased some of them thirty to sixty percent? And the answer to that is we have numerous cells in those type of properties and subdivisions, smaller lots. We just have a lot more cells to address that on a yearly basis. In the Ran, Old Ranch Road area, we just have not had the cells. And then last year in twenty twenty one, we had cells and they were astronomical. So that's why such a huge increase.
All right. So is my.
That increase, I just want to state.
Okay.
We was there the year before. We just didn't have the, the cells to support that. And that is our goal in our office to have this position, to have a data analyst to help us expand that when we know that the values are coming up, but we need a way to appraise that and be able to defend that value. We can't have an increase of a hundred percent without a, a way to defend that value with cells.
Okay, I, I, so then I just need to understand. I went back and looked at my historical tax bills. And you said they had to be within five percent of the market value.
Um, our sales ratio study has to be within five percent. That doesn't mean every single home is going to be within five percent of market because we're doing mass appraisal. We're not doing like a fee appraiser that can hone in on just one home with five or 10 comps. We're doing mass appraisal. So that five percent is for our sales ratio study. That has to be within five percent.
Okay.
Which is a shotgun approach, obviously. So your home.
Right.
Would be, you could have got a windfall because you've got a much nicer home or you could have got penalty.
Right. Well, I'm just seeing over the last few years, you know, this year my house went up like sixty two percent and I live in Ranch Place. Which when you said, well, I heard thirty five percent, um, because my honest thought was I contested it or tried to appeal and um, I was like, okay, was my home targeted? Because I tried to appeal the last couple of years.
No, no, no.
General quick question. Um, uh, so, okay, I appreciate you addressing my questions. I, that's what I wanted to know to make sure I was clear. So I appreciate the time and thank you. You do, you do sound very understaffed.
Thank you, Gina. Uh, Brian, Suzie. Suzie, are you with us? Please give us your name and speak to us if you'd like to. Okay. Suzie? All right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna close the public input on this. Uh, I need to make a correction. My, my personal taxes, the value increased two point six times, but it's percentage that I misspoke. My taxes went up by about a little over double, but that's a hundred percent increase, not two hundred percent. So I noticed you were correcting me, Stephanie, non-verbally. I, I sensed that there was some bad vibes that I'd overstated my position. So, you know, the, the issue of whether or not uh, the general tax base is properly valued is a huge driver because that drives the certified rate and drives everything else. And your explanation that, say, in my particular case, that you didn't have comps for a few years on Old Ranch Road where I live, so perhaps my value was understated. I'm not going to comment. Uh, and that then this year when you had some numbers, you sought it to me. Understood. But, uh, in the bigger picture, you know, the, there might be some way to, for, for the Board of Equalization to get a sense, which is the role we're serving in, to get a sense for how, how things have happened, if the, if the whole forty two thousand parcel database were sorted in certain ways that could maybe by the five or six areas you listed, North Summit, South Summit, you know, Old Town, whatever you said, commercial. And, and to, 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 and I, I'm not smart enough to crunch this data, but to, to, to analyze it, to, to see, you know, in the big picture, have there been areas that are still that, you know, that undervalued? Now, now, undervalued, I don't know what the metric, this is big picture. Per square foot, are there, are there outliers? I, I do this kind of analysis on some other things where I, where I don't trust the data. I'm trying to figure, figure out, uh, am I missing something? Is, is it just my paranoia? Or is there really some, some problem there?
It's your paranoia.
Probably, but my friend here says just because I'm paranoid doesn't mean someone's not trying to kill me. So, so is, I mean, if that were exported to some Excel or some database, there, there ought to be some analysis that could be done.
Yes.
That would, that would be informative.
Yes.
Is there a way that you could come back with something like that? I mean, obviously, we don't want to see forty two lines of forty two thousand.
Yes, and you're not going to. The, the quick, uh, quick and dirty that we got from Nick at the State Tax Commission just yesterday. And we, we need to scrub that. He's actually coming in, uh, in our office next week to, we're going to talk to the appraisers about this. And we did not see anything glaring other than those commercials in Snyderville Basin. And then our Weber Canyon area, we need to address.
Okay, so let's just speak hypothetically that, that, uh, when you do this, this data analysis that you found, you know, uh, I don't know what, you, you rattled off some numbers that added up to over a billion dollars in, you said eight hundred and some odd million just in Snyderville Basin or Old Town or something in.
Oh, Old Town's reappraisal for this year was eight hundred fifty four million dollar increase.
Reappraisal, I mean, it, from, you sent tax notices out, and this gets to the whole question of this request, which is, you know, an interesting one of just setting aside all your work. God, screwed up. Do it over. Now, I don't know how that comports. I mean, I suppose if it were really, if that were really the case, we'd have to do that, but I don't know how that's done. I mean, uh, that's what Dave Thomas questioned. Um, but let's just say hypothetic, let's say we had an error in the whole thing. It's just like trash, which is not, I don't believe that's the case, but.
Forgot to carry the one.
We got, yeah, we got a, we, we left the decimal off, you know, or, so what would, what would, what would be the process? Uh, would, would, you know, legally?
I mean, legally, you've got, and this is one area of the law, that the legislature restricted the authority of counties to change. There's a statutory process. You have to go through the statutory process. There are timelines that are spelled out in that statutory process. There are processes in terms of fair market value and how you reach that through, uh, state tax commission rule. And you have to follow that process. And so if you're saying at the end of, of all of this, gee.
No, I'm saying, what if we screwed up the process? Let's just, let's just say that we had the wrong value. We'd do it. As Roger said, we left it.
You can change that. I mean, the way the legislature has set up the property tax system, you can fix an, an issue on a property by property basis.
Uh huh.
And that's the way they have laid it out. So if you're at the end, if you've, once you've gone through the statutory steps, there isn't a statutory way to go back and redo.
And those statutory steps are the green dates, the market, the market value, the assessors setting.
All those, all those things, you, once you hit those dates, you can't go back. You go forward by having a process that individuals can come and they can protest their taxes and protest the market value, go through the Board of Equalization. And in that fashion, try to remedy whatever error it was. But that's the only basis statutory.
If, if the assessor were to discover that there was an error made, she could unilaterally bring, bring adjustments to, as part of stipulations on a parcel by parcel basis.
Absolutely. For those twelve lots, we discovered, well, brought to our attention as we're trying to figure out why they were so upset and to find those twelve lots. So we did open the appeal on our end, so that that's.
But let's say the, 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 uh, the, you know, the product is, it's, it's the product of two factors. The assessed value, taxable value and the tax rate. The tax rate was set based on the values being portably right.
Mm-huh.
And so there's no way, you know, we can, you, adjustments can be made, but that certified rate's not going anywhere.
Correct.
That certified rate, once the auditor gives it to us based on the values that Stephanie put on every, you know, the total assessed forty two thousand. Are you disagreeing with this?
Uh, we have renoticed a couple of times since I've been here in the, in the last decade. If, I guess if we discover it soon enough, one time we renoticed the whole county um, with evaluation notice. So maybe if we find an error early enough.
So, and then when you renoticed, did you extend the appeal deadline?
They must have.
Is that stated in statute?
It's, it's forty five days from when you mail, right?
Well, but if you renoticed, is it forty five days from when you remail?
I don't think so. I think the statute sets the, the time period based upon the set, set dates that are in the statute. Um, there may be a little bit of give, but not very much.
Yeah.
So if you, if you find an error, um, there might be a small window where you could correct it before the next time period kicks in. That's the reason why. So for example, um, individuals who come in and, and have non-primary property and they want to change it to primary property. You know, there's statutory process for that. And if you miss the, the time deadlines, you have to wait till the next year.
Yeah.
And that's the way the property tax system, you know, operates. And to the extent, if you've got some systemic problem that you've found and you've, you've missed those statutory deadlines, then the cure is for the next year for you to cure it.
I, I.
In that process.
I think if there were a way to do some, some analytics on, on the database to see, and, and you say this Nick fellow at the Tax Commission has helped you in some way with some GIS information. But if there were a way that we could see, you know, in a, could, could better understand the data, because we've got a bunch of good people here that went up. There may be a lot of people that said, geez, I lucked out this year. I'm staying home. Keep my head down. And, you know, but.
Well, just in an increasing market, you, we're, we are always playing catch up. We're not going to be right at market at every property simply because of the increasing value of that. So.
Even the impact, now you say you've raised the Old Town commercial by eight hundred million and you, in, in the current numbers, not, not errors. You've discovered that you're going to send them a new notice in the current.
Yes, one add on the tax.
Yeah, I just think it, it, if there were a way that we could see and make available to others to, to get the big picture of, of, of what, what's gone up and, and, you know, I think like in my case, and I think it's true, main. I may have been undervalued, split under the radar.
You didn't let us know.
No, don't, I'm not, I'm saying may, that's a, not a, a certainty.
Right.
But they, but, but now, i- the question is, is there a way to look at the overall tax base and see that it, that it is fairly valued and see if there are outliers and maybe, maybe it isn't, but.
I think that's what she's done. And, you know, what I hear, I think the principal complaint seems to be that there are undervalued properties that are requiring people to bear more. And I don't know on a short term basis, how you pour through the, the tax rolls and try and identify, identifying. I mean, what she's doing is on a broad basis in, in terms of neighborhoods. And unless she's able to identify a neighborhood that was skipped, the, the appraiser in charge that day was, he got two more tunes and watched before he went out.
That might help.
Might help, might hurt. But there are, we've got anecdotal reports that my neighbor is less than mine or this neighbor is, hasn't been assessed in several, been assessed in several years. Those, as I said, those are individual data points. I've not heard anything that's, and those are, are, again, anecdotal. I've not heard anything that says this whole process is flawed. That's what's missing.
Well, yeah, I think that one way to do a sort would be if you had a database with all forty two thousand properties and you would assort it by percent change.
Yes.
So you start, have at the top, I'm, I'm near the top maybe, and then you have some that decreased. And then you look at those on both sides and say, okay, those that decreased are their values per square foot in the basement. And these up here, I mean, there ought to be some way to get a gut check.
We can, we can delve into that and go as deep as we can. What I need is a motion for the council to amend the current budget and give me a data analyst for twenty twenty two.
Yeah, you're not.
I have a question as well regarding that, Chris, a question regarding your. I have a question as well regarding that, Chris, a question regarding your request.
Hang on, hang on. You got a voice from the, from the Zoom wherever she is.
I'm here. Can you hear me? Um, so if, if Stephanie were to go through and do a more detailed analysis, what I heard from Dave is that this is set, the process as she's outlined, it is set for through state statute and would require the legislature to amend that in order to go through and change the process broadly to accommodate some of these changes. Is, am I hearing that correct, Dave and Stephanie?
There's a statutory process. If, if you're, if you're looking to make the kinds of adjustments that is being talked about, I don't think you can do it legally this year. I think you've gone through the, you've, you've set, you've already set the rate, the forty-five days is now running. You, to the extent people appeal, they appeal to show their market values. Um, yeah. The, the system is not designed for you to come in and say, my value or the amount I'm paying should be less because I think you, you know, you misappraised my neighbor.
No, I, I.
And it's not designed to do that.
Let me, let me ask you, let me ask you differently. Let's say that, that Jeff the first is right. And that there's a systemic problem with statistically significant undervaluations that overall would make a substantial difference in.
The certified rate.
Somebody's tax, tax bill, right, whether way. Um, and Stephanie did some sort of data scrub that said, yep, that's the case. And, you know, if we had done this correctly, it would have resulted in, she huddles with Cory and with Michael Howard. And they say, yeah, instead of quadruple zero, whatever it was, six, one, five, it should have been quadruple zero, six, one, one. And that would have affected everybody's tax bill in this way. Can we do a mass adjustment on a board of equalization basis?
Not under the statute.
Well, if the market valuation was low.
Statute, you, the board of equalization can't change the tax rate.
No, but we can change somebody's tax bill by saying there was a flaw in the system and.
You can change the value, the market value of the property, but you can't change the tax rate.
Yeah, okay, that's, but I think, you know, the.
Fine.
There's, there's a group, obviously.
You can try to cure it during the next, the next year as it, as it goes through.
I don't think there's even time to do that.
Well, I, I think that, I think it would be possible to sort the database from highest percent increase to lowest.
You can, but you'd want to see that from year to year over a, a longer period of time.
I, I think that then the, then the question is you would be, and you, you could do it by your neighborhood or your areas, you know, North Summit, do it, do it by those areas. And then apply some, do a little bit of math on square footages and things and see if you see some real outliers. Because what, what we have here is, we have a, a group of the public that is somewhat diminished, just the diehards are left. Uh, but they, they likely represent a larger segment of the, uh, unattending public that, that are, that are questioning our system for valuing the properties in, in the end.
Well, the system i- is good.
I, I understand that.
And we, and we are following our mandates. As far as what we're learning from what the, the information we got just yesterday from Nick, we were already aware that we had an issue with the previous commercial appraiser. I, I can work with Josh Milton at the State Tax Commission. Perhaps we can get some added help instead of, um.
You're just saying the problem's commercial, but what, what, what?
Well, it, because.
Are you, are you, are you?
For example, the one gentleman, I've got my appraisers are texting me left and right. It depends on what information they're looking at that they're giving to you here today. The gentleman in promontory actually used last year. So when you go out onto the website, like if you're on GIS and you click it, that first value is given you last year's. It's not updated. You have to go into more information to get the current year's values.
The gentleman who brought the party to show you the print, I'm the chosen year old and you'll see where it has.
So I think that the, you know, that you, there, there are sort of two issues. One is, is it your belief that the commercial valuations in twenty twenty-two are accurate? Or do you believe that there are issues with them still?
I have believed for some time that our commercial values are low. That's why we've come to you for.
I, I, uh, my question is in twenty twenty-two, are the commercial values low in your opinion?
In the Snyderville Basin area, absolutely. But Old Town has been bought current as has Camus last year.
Okay, but Sniderville Basin's a pretty big area.
Yes, it is. Five hundred pieces.
So then, do you, your, your contention is that on the residential side, the non-commercial side, that your system is working and other than a few minor outliers, perhaps the twelve lots you found, that, that you believe those values are fairly set?
Yes, I don't think you, we have that big discrepancy in residential.
Given now, does this Sniderville Basin commercial just get a free pass for twenty twenty-two?
Well, and unless we just throw a number at it, I, we can't do that. I have to have numbers that I can defend.
Uh, uh, so, but, but even from a legal point of view, David, we've given them a notice based on some values that, you know, and I don't know, you know, in the big picture, I agree with Roger's quote on the Deseret News article that the place has been in the residential side. Commercial has gone up, but it's not the rocket ship that residential has or that even multifamily, even a better rocket. But, but even, you know, factoring in the discrepancies that you may think that there are in the Sniderville Basin, whether they are material enough to make a big difference. But I unders, better understand that maybe, maybe we're looking at the wrong thing. Maybe you ought to do that analysis and present us just with the commercial properties. And so we can see that if you, you know, I mean.
So, well, if, if we had to correct data and I could do that before September fifteenth, I would absolutely open an appeal. But here's the problem.
Can you appeal your own valuation?
Yeah, I just did with those twelve lots. I opened an appeal and corrected it. Absolutely.
Well, then maybe, how many days you got?
Exactly. How many hands and toes and fingers have I got? Our staff appraisers right now, they're not doing their new growth. They're not doing their detail review because for two weeks they've had their head to a headset or emailing, they're working on board of equalization right now. There is not the staffing for me to take that information that we've gotten from the state and address that before September fifteenth.
Maybe, maybe this is what we ought to do because it's running late. Maybe you and I don't mean to impose upon our Intram County manager who's perhaps studying something else.
She's ignoring you.
Jana? I'm, I'm, hey, I'm, I'm a multitasker. Don't, don't say anything to me. I was saying that it, it's, it sounds to me like we have a very short window between now and forty, and the fifteenth of September, that if we know of a, it's not going to affect the certified rate. I'm sorry, but it, but even if it did it materially, whether it's going to move the needle big time, given forty-five billion, not sure, but we at least, we ought to understand that problem and get some help. If, if you're really, if you believe that, that the Sniderville Basin commercial is under assessed,
Mm-hmm.
then we ought to figure that out and before the forty, the forty-fifth day, which is September fifteenth.
I, I agree with you. So I would like you to explain how you want us to reappraise nearly five hundred parcels of commercial while still doing the jobs that the appraisers are doing right now.
I, I don't have an answer to that. I.
If she did, I mean, she, I, I, I don't know what it does to send out higher tax bills on the commercial side. It would be the fair thing to do. But it, yeah, but it doesn't change the overall burden on, on people that are.
I think that, I think the residential side and the commercial are going to have to do their own appeals. There's no.
The extra revenue because the tax rate is set based on the prior valuation. So you're going to have extra revenue from that.
Well.
And that's illegal.
I, I don't know that it's.
I, and I don't know if Michael were here, if he could, I, I always thought that we could not overshoot the runway too badly because it would affect the tax rate. So would the tax rate, the tax rate then not be readjusted for the adjusted? I mean, there is a process.
To readjust the certified rate?
Yes, I thought so, because we do recertify the role after board of equalization. I mean, it's, it's, we take into account the value changes that take place during board of equalization.
Okay, so you do do.
To disappear.
But it happens outside of my office. I'm not sure the, the process.
David, maybe you need to research that, but she's saying that the, the certified rate gets adjusted post-board of equalization. Do you believe that?
I don't know if it does.
I mean, there's, there is a portion of the property tax calculation.
Matt, come up to the microphone, please.
It's just Matt, it's just Matt Levitt, Malina. He's really not going to say much.
I know, but it seemed like it could be useful.
Well, maybe occasionally.
A lot of financial information in his head.
With, within the property tax rate calculation, there is a, an allowance for board of equalization adjustments. You, you, it's.
It's a five percent or some de minimis amount.
You get some, a little bit of allowance for the board of equalization adjustments. So it, it is in there in the property tax calculations, but once you've set that rate in July, I've, I've never seen them adjust the rate post-July twenty, July, June.
So I, I think that.
This is remarkable that he actually agrees with me.
He, he, it, it's, it's remarkable that anyone agrees with you, but that's beside the point. I think that, no, we, we, we do agree with you often. I, I think we need, well, okay, we do agree with you. I think the, uh, question is, is there, I, I do think it's a fairness question. And there is, you, you say you have five hundred properties and I don't know that you're met, what, what kind of tools you would need to, to adjust those if you think that you haven't been able to do them properly before now.
So I think what I would do is I will work with Josh at the State Tax Commission. Our staffing right now, we could not get to those by next May twenty-second, real close. However, given the situation, maybe we can get some assistance from the State Tax Commission, from our tax reps to help us bring that Sniderville Basin commercial. But it can be done by September fifteenth, but we could do it by next real close if we get, if needed.
What do you, what do you mean by next real close? June, July, January one?
May twenty-second of twenty twenty-two, for the twenty-three.
Of twenty twenty-three. I'm talking about, so anything that can be done between now, that you could make adjustments between now and Sep- September fifteenth with, if Jana were to, were to, uh, dip into some contingency or something and we make that happen. Is there any, here we are on the, on the tenth.
Let me go back to, let's assume she does. What happened, Matt? What happens to that revenue? Because that's going to be.
The county gets it. The county gets it and all the taxing entities get it.
That, that's correct. I would, that would, that kind of goes against the way the property tax system was set up.
That's what I'm worried about.
So then, so that, if, if, for example, in, in Jeff Juan's example, that he says that we want to, we want to appeal our neighbor's property and make them pay more or pay whatever closer to their market value, whatever. That becomes some sort of property tax revenue increase to the county, which is not correct. We, we do receive the same amount of revenue year after year after year, with the exception of a new, new growth. So.
So this could be a great scheme. We, we said it.
Well, it would, it would probably. It would probably trigger a tax commission audit.
Well, so.
Josh is with the tax.
I'm, I want, if it's possible, would you four get together and see, and come up with a recommendation on what should happen and needs to happen pronto if we're going to do anything?
Well, I mean, when you say reach into the coffers or into the contingency fund, I mean, we're, we're going to have to find appraisers to do that and our best resource would probably be the tax commission.
Okay.
Uh, to help us with that. But I don't know that it's appropriate to attempt to do that by September fifteenth. But certainly, um, where those five hundred have not been hit in five years, it, the tax commission would want to help us do that, I think.
I don't want to pretend that my memory is perfect, but I think had you made the case to us, maybe you did and I've forgotten, that our commercial properties are way undervalued and that I need X, Y, and Z in order to do that, then, then that would have happened. I think the council would have supported that, maybe.
We do. We had a commercial.
Yes, uh huh.
But maybe we get hired.
The open appeal for, yeah.
I get it. I don't understand the details of why some areas are okay and others are not. But I think we've done as much as we can today unless, unless Janet, David, Matt and, and Stephanie want to somehow work together to see if there's a rational way with State Tax Commissioner, someone else's help to make adjustments before the fifteenth of September. We can, hopefully, you know, we'll correct things next year if, if to the extent that we have them. And, and I don't know how material they are because you haven't, you know, in, in the broad scheme of things, these adjustments that you might make if you knew how to make them in Sniderville Basin commercial. I hope they're material.
I mean, we have, you just got to be careful when you place those valuations that you've not just thrown a number, you have to be able to defend that. So I just don't think that that can be done. I think it's unrealistic to say it can be done by September fifteenth.
Why do you think they're undervalued?
Well, I don't know necessarily that they're undervalued. What I'm telling you is they haven't been, their value has not changed since twenty seventeen, which to me does not make sense. The value should have changed from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two.
I don't want to belabor it, but why haven't they changed since twenty seventeen?
Well, we would have to ask, um, someone prior, my predecessor, why that?
Well, no, I mean, but how, how, I, why haven't they, how long have you been here?
I, in twenty was my first real close.
Twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty. And we've had market value increases in twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two.
But not on this commercial.
But not in Snyderville Basin because our appraiser is, he's.
So you're saying that you're on your five-year rotation.
In five years, we, we will get it because we have an appraiser who's doing his task.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I did, I'm just trying to get, because we have people that are concerned, obviously, and want to, we want to make sure that, that we're doing the best we can. I think we should probably end this discussion right now. Jeff seems to have one other thing.
Ten seconds. This is a hundred and seven properties that we've identified. About twenty percent of these are commercial properties.
Uh huh.
Twenty percent.
Do you have any sense for whether some of these changes might be due to primary versus secondary or is?
No, no, these are, these are assessed values. They have nothing to do with taxable values.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we've done about as much damage as we can for one night on this topic. Thank you all for coming and for participating. I forget what else we were going to do tonight, but I think we should scrub it.
Can, can I, I'm sorry, before we leave this, Stephanie, he's, he's got a hundred and seven properties on there. And I think you said that one in Old Town, when you took a look at it, it essentially became a nightly rental. Is that what happened?
Well, but we brought it back to residential. We've just made the call to, to put it in residential because it's no longer being actively done as a bed and breakfast. So we've taken it out of commercial coding and put it back into residential, but we have raised the value.
Are nightly rentals, a, a home that's being used as a nightly rental rather than as, with a business license? Is that taxed on a commercial basis or residential basis?
It's residential. We do not do a market analysis or market income approach on nightly rentals.
So those should be up to, up to whatever the valuation is. They shouldn't be lagging for that.
No.
Okay.
Next week you'll have the corrected value.
All right, so the things we skipped over were council comments and Intram County Manager comments. And then we were going to have a closed session on property after this. I think maybe we want to scrub the latter. And so I'm going to go to the council, starting with Malina. Are there any comments? Thank you, Stephanie, Matthew. Thanks all of you for coming. Malina, council comments?
Yeah, I, I just had one as significant. I attended.
I, I just had one as significant. I attended, um, an economic development meeting today that's being administered through the Mountain Land Association of Government, Governments. Um, that was, uh, Jeff Jones came and represented staff of the county in his role. Uh, Jennifer Wasselhoff was also there as well as representatives from Utah County and Wasatch County. Um, and so we will be going through and looking at an updated strategic plan for that. Um, I believe beginning this January. And so there will be more information to follow in that vein.
Glenn?
Uh, I'll put off most, some comments till in our next session. I will just say, I didn't think it was going to be so much fun getting, being home with COVID. Why haven't you guys go through tonight's session?
Okay, well, as long as you're not in one of those COVID fogs. Okay, Roger?
I just want to say that I'm grateful to Glenn for not passing it on because I think I sat next to him at our last council meeting. So thank you, Glenn.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to forego any commentary. I've said too much tonight already. Jana?
Just a few quick things. Um, one, I wanted to let you know I have your rodeo tickets for the county fair. Um, again, just to promote that, it's going on this week and thirteenth. We also have our, our, um, sheepdog trials the following week and a concert September, I think fourth or third or early September. So a lot of great things going on the county fair. Wanted to make sure, um, people get out there and see it. Uh, another cool thing is, um, ICMA, which is the International City and County Managers Association, picked up our discussion on our wildland fire coordination and communication and put that in their newsletter that went out across the nation. So Roger, you're actually quoted in it. Um, so it, and they have a link to the park record article, but it, it's all about emergency management and public safety and how, uh, Summit County, Utah is doing this great coordination plan. So I wanted to let you know we got some kudos and exposure there. Lastly, some really excellent news, which will become public tomorrow. So maybe I'm preempting um, the Department of Transportation a little bit, but um, we just were informed that we're receiving a twenty-five million dollar raise grant uh, for our state Route two-two-four Bus Rapid Transit program and, uh, bus, electric buses. We have tried five years now to get this grant and we finally were awarded. Uh, it's very exciting, very big deal for our small community. Um, obviously we'll be able to push this project forward. I wanted to make sure we acknowledge the Utah Congressional Delegation, which really helped us in this effort. Congressman Moore was actually the one to notify us. And then the Utah Transportation Commission also, um, you know, we were granted thirty million from the state for this project, which really I think helped push the award in our favor. So some really great news there. And then finally, I just wanted to make sure you saw that we are rescheduling Tom Fisher's farewell party to August twenty-second, um, five-thirty PM again at the UOP. Um, so that'll be, uh, since we don't have a council meeting next week, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that.
Thank you for doing that. That's actually a good date for me.
Yes.
We're going to, we're going to see Congressman Moore. I think he's going to be here.
The twenty-third.
On the twenty-third.
So maybe even before then. Actually, we probably can't do anything before then. I was going to say we should probably send a thank you note.
Yes, I drafted those during this meeting tonight. So I'll probably have Chris sign on behalf of the council and Kim on behalf of High Valley Transit, and then Caroline and I can.
No wonder you weren't paying attention.
I was for most of the meeting. You taught me in one moment.
David keeps one ear to the ground always, even though he's written ten agreements while we've been sitting, seated here.
Unless, unless David Althons or the mayor of North Peal.
North Peal.
North Peal. Has any comments coming in?
So a second? You, is there a real second? Malina?
Second.
It's been moved in second by Roger and Malina. We adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you.
Everyone have a good night.